Ready to go? John, welcome. Hey, Marcy, am I on? Okay, we're gonna start our meeting. So, welcome, everybody, to our meeting tonight. Looks like we have a big crowd tonight. So, welcome to our city council meeting. We're gonna call the meeting to order and have a roll called by our city clerk, Marcy Killian.
The record will reflect that all members are present.
Tonight, we're gonna have our pledge of allegiance and our invocation by Loretta Gurkin, president of the Vista Golden Key Cowanis Club.
Thank you. Please rise and face the flag and put your hand over your heart and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under one God. Thank you. If you'll bow your heads, please. Heavenly Father, help us to forget our errors and blunders, for tomorrow is another day when we can begin anew. Help us to focus on what we can do and how we can apply our abilities to help others. Give us long-range goals to keep us from being frustrated by short-range failures. Amen. Thank you.
Amen. Thank you. In accordance with the Brown Act, I'd like to announce that as a result of convening simultaneous meetings, the members of the Buenos sanitation district will receive compensation of $147.75 for the district meeting pursuant to the Buenos sanitation district ordinance 2006-1. The next thing on our agenda is the approval of the agenda by our city manager, Patrick Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. One item, which is public hearing item number two, that is the 2012 Regional Transportation Improvement Program Amendment. This item will be continued to March 11th, so the public hearing will need to be opened, and then we will continue the item at that time.
Okay. We didn't have a closed session, so we don't have any closed session report out. And Jonathan Stone is our attorney today. Darryl Piper, our regular city attorney, is not here today, so he's taking his place. So, welcome to our meeting. The first presentations, we have two presentations tonight. One is the law enforcement awards, and the second is our adopt-a-block recognition. So, we'll start out with the law enforcement awards, and I'd like to invite Community Safety Commission Chair Ellen Le-nevsky and Vice Chair Jeff Guyer to join me at the podium, and Captain Rhodey also. And actually, maybe the council also. Okay, so we're doing our law enforcement awards, and our first one is our Deputy of the Year. And I understand he is ill tonight, is that right? His name is Corporal Robert Adler. Yes, and he's ill tonight, but we're gonna read his thing here also. Anyway. Deputy Robert Adler has worked for the Sheriff's Department in the city of Vista for his entire career, starting in 2006. Prior to serving the citizens of Vista as deputy sheriff, Deputy Adler served as a community service officer. Deputy Adler currently has the collateral duty of being the Vista Patrol Station's training coordinator. As a training coordinator, Deputy Adler has spent countless hours training and mentoring new deputies who were hired by the Sheriff's Department. Deputy Adler has strived to give new deputies the best training experience possible in order to ensure that they become some of the best law enforcement officers the state of California has to offer. As a lead field training officer, FTO, Deputy Adler constantly sets a positive example of professionalism and customer service for other training officers to follow and instill on new deputies. In addition to training new deputies, Deputy Adler is also responsible for keeping up to date on the thousands of pages of training records that are required by both the Sheriff's Department and the California State Commission on Peace Officer Standards and Training. In addition to his training duties, Deputy Adler still finds the time to patrol the streets of Vista, responding to priority 911 calls, as well as serving in the traffic division as a collision investigator. Deputy Adler continues to come to work every day with a smile on his face, except for today. Let me see. Ever ready to lend his fellow coworkers and the citizens of Vista a helping hand. So, we congratulate Deputy Adler, and we're so sorry and hope he gets well soon. So, congratulations to him. So, I don't know, we won't probably do a picture. Shall we do? Yeah. And maybe we can do a picture with him when he comes back. That would be, yeah, we can arrange that. So, the next person is our Senior Volunteer of the Year. It's James Baines. Is he, where is he? Is he here? Come on down. Senior Volunteer Patrol member Jim Baines has been a dedicated member of the Vista Senior Volunteer Patrol for four years. During his time on the patrol, SVP, I guess that means Senior Volunteer Patrol, SVP, Baines, has assumed several leadership positions and helped train and mentor new senior volunteer members. SVP Baines has donated several thousand hours, several thousand hours, that's wonderful, to the patrol, and is always one of the first to respond to critical incidents, whether it is during his normal shift hours or when he is called at home in the middle of the night. As a supervisor of the SVP unit, SVP Baines has been instrumental in organizing the unit's 18,000 hours of community service during 2013. His personnel have logged over 58,000 vehicle miles, deployed over 908 separate patrol units, and made over 210 home visits to our You Are Not Alone disabled members of our community. So, congratulations to our Senior Volunteer of the Year, James Baines. So, to do a picture, I'm thinking we need to do up in front here, huh? Everybody to the, up here. Okay. Our next award is to our Explorer Deputy of the Year, Kevin McCauley. Kevin McCauley has been an explorer for four years, beginning in February 2010. Since that time, he has accumulated well over 1,000 hours of volunteer time to the Vista Station, the Sheriff's Department, as well as to other in-county agencies that are a part of the Law Enforcement Exploring Learning for Life Program. In fact, in one month alone, he volunteered 109 hours. Explorer McCauley has been recognized with several accommodations, including Training Level 1 and 2 awards from the San Diego Law Enforcement Explorers Academy, Law Enforcement Explorer Service Award, the Law Enforcement Explorer Perfect Attendance Award, the Law Enforcement Explorer Tenure Award, the Law Enforcement Explorer of the Year Award from the Boy Scouts of America in 2012, and many more. Explorer McCauley has achieved the rank of Law Enforcement Explorer Sergeant and currently holds the rank of Law Enforcement Explorer Lieutenant. While holding these positions, he has taken an active role in assisting with administrative duties, preparing and conducting training for the Vista Station Explorers and the entire exploring unit with the Sheriff's Department, and is a strong role model and leader for more junior explorers. He currently works as a community service officer for the college he attends and continues to broaden his depth and understanding of the career of law enforcement. So, congratulations to Kevin McCauley. Okay. We have one more here. Actually, we have two more. This one is Reserve Deputy of the Year, Deputy Raymond Tutera. Reserve Deputy Sheriff Raymond Tutera is once again Vista's Reserve Deputy of the Year. Am I saying it right, Tutera? Okay, make sure I got that. His reserve and regular patrol partners hold him in the highest regards. During this period, Reserve Deputy Tutera worked in excess of 650 unpaid patrol hours, saved the department and the city approximately $30,000. The majority of these hours were spent in a marked Vista patrol vehicle, working and responding to calls for service in some of the most active sectors of our city. His professionalism, dedication to duty, detailed understanding of the expectations of a reserve deputy, all indicate a level of knowledge and ability that continues to be the subject of numerous citations and awards. In the recent past, his value to the department resulted in his designation as one of the best reserve peace officers in the county and in the state of California. Additionally, he has received numerous exemplary performance awards in recognition of his continuing contributions to the safety and welfare of our citizens. So, congratulations to Deputy Raymond Tutera. Okay. Now, we have one more here. This is Professional Staff Member of the Year, Darcie Brown. Darcie Brown has been a crime prevention specialist and crime analyst at the Vista Sheriff's Station for the past 12 years. Due to her hard work and dedication, in 2013, she was promoted to the coveted position of Criminal Intelligence Analyst. During her tenure, she has been instrumental in instituting and developing the Vista Station's entire criminal analysis program from the ground up. She's a subject matter expert for the station, researching, collecting, analyzing criminal and community demographic data in order to determine patterns and trends. She in turn delivers that critical information to the field units, providing them with real-time, actionable information on current crime sprees and trends. She has tirelessly assisted in major felonious operations by conducting hundreds of hours of manual and automated searches, retrieving and compiling hundreds of thorough targeting packages. She has worked closely with and responds to dozens of monthly requests from the city of Vista, helping them access the proper allocation of law enforcement manpower and funding. She's been instrumental in assisting the Vista Command in developing and deploying personnel in these time-proven strategies to combat criminal trends that surface. Darcie exemplifies excellence in performance in every aspect of her work. She is dedicated, passionate, and a key member of the San Diego Sheriff's Department. So, congratulations to Darcie Brown, Staff Member of the Year. We're gonna do certificates, and I think they are over here. The next thing, our next presentation here will be our city's Adopt-a-Block Program. Through the city's Adopt-a-Block Program, groups or individuals adopt an area of the city to keep clean. The city provides the supplies while the groups provide the volunteer manpower. And tonight, we'd like to recognize two Adopt-a-Block Groups. The first is North County Lifeline. So, with North County Lifeline, that group, please come to our podium, be recognized, and we're gonna give you certificates. So, North County Lifeline, those of you who are in that Adopt-a-Block Group? So, I guess, so I guess, is someone gonna read the name? Are you reading the names? Am I reading the names?
It's just a group. It's just a group.
Oh, it's just, oh, it's just a group? Oh. Okay, okay. So, let's see, it says, it says, "Certificate of Appreciation Awarded to North County Lifeline in Recognition of Exceptional Service to the Community in 2013 While Participating in the Adopt-a-Block Program in the City of Vista, California." So, congratulations to you guys, and thank you for doing that. We appreciate you. Thank you. And the next group is a big group. No, and how are you doing that one? Kathy, are you, are you announcing the names? Yes.
Gets her handed out. So, this group is Vista, A Clean Environment, and it was established in August 2011 by Maria Serón de Velasco and her family. The group has grown from 13 members to 56 volunteers in 2013. Through bimonthly cleanup activities, the group provided a total of 710 volunteer hours. The Vista Clean Environment volunteers are Maria Serón de Velasco, Jessica Velasco-Serón, Brian Velasco, Christopher Velasco, Andres Garcia. Oh, there should be, yeah. They're coming up in order. Sorry. Yeah. You wanna go around, or we could give it to him after if you want, if that's easier. Angelica Garcia, Norilda Oriana, Maria Salomón, David Salomón, Alexandra Salomón, Gabriela Salomón, Rigoberto Salomón, Betsy Vargas, Angelica Martinez, Giselle Ramirez, Anthony Tinejero, Wasinto Ramirez, Angel Martinez, Miguel Martinez, Raquel Martinez, Yasmin Colores, Alberto Colores, Yer Colores, Eduardo Mendez, Jorge Armando López, Jennifer López, Patricia López, Maria Antonia Perez, Omar López Perez, Clementina Perez, or Clementina López, sorry, Yasmin Morales López, Jocelyn Ortiz, Ricardo Silva, Luz Maria Vázquez, Erica Rangel, Jacqueline Ortiz, Martha León, Roberto Colores, Alma González, Alexis Guzmán, Adiana González, Mauricio Suárez, Stephanie Suárez, and Sylvia Garido Mendez.
Okay. Okay. Okay, so there's only one request for oral communications. I'd like to move oral communications up prior to the consent calendar, and we have just one, and it's Trish, is it Mirapoti? Did I say that right?
Sorry. Do we have a digital connection that we can do? Just, we have a poster?
Do you have a PowerPoint?
No, 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 just like.
Oh, no, we don't have that. We don't have that anymore.
Okay. No worries. So, hello, good evening, mayor and council members. My name is Trish Mirapoti, and this is Jan O'Reilly. Tonight, we're here just to extend an invitation for you all to come to the First Annual Vista Unified School District STEM Fest. We represent the Curriculum and Instruction Department at Vista Unified School District, and on March 11th, 2014, at Washington Middle School, this will be our First Annual Science, Technology, Engineering, and Math Festival. So, that will be a night that we're gonna showcase student work that has been in the areas of science, technology, engineering, and math. We're gonna be uniting educators, students, parents, the community. UCSD is gonna be coming down. We've got Birch Aquarium. We've got beach physics that will be coming from UCSD, Cosmos, Miracosta, Palomar. It's gonna be a fantastic evening to really celebrate student innovation and creativity in the area of science, technology, engineering, and math. I do think that you received an invitation, and Jan O'Reilly has one to give you guys an official invitation for this evening. Dr. Dovischka will have a 6:30 keynote presentation to start the evening. Around 5:30 to 6:30, we're gonna be having some food trucks to start the, kind of the festival. We have Ballet Focalorio from RBV dancing, and we have two other presenters on stage just to kinda, you know, kick off the event. And we'd love for anyone to attend if, you know, you are willing on that evening. We know it's kinda short notice, but we still wanna invite you. We do have some posters coming around. If there is an opportunity for you all to place these anywhere, please feel free to do that, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. We hope to be there.
Thank you.
It's a council meeting, but if we get, yeah, but if we get done early, we'll, we'll try and hurry, so we can come over there.
Oh, wonderful. Okay, thank you.
Okay. A what?
Oceanside City Council.
Oh, Oceanside.
It's on Wednesday night.
Yeah, there, yeah.
Thank you for your.
Yes, thank you. Good luck. We wanna be there, so, okay. So, that brings us now to our consent calendar. The recommendations on the following consent calendar will be enacted in one motion unless an item is removed from the calendar. Any member of the public can remove an item by submitting a Request to Speak card to the Clerk's Secretary, and items removed from the consent calendar will be considered immediately following the adoption of the consent calendar. So, that brings us to the consent items. They are numbers 1 through, C1 through C10. So, do I have any that are pulled off? I don't see any that are pulled off. How about the council? Anything over here? So, if not, I would entertain a motion for approval.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Okay, please cast your votes. That vote passes unanimously. So, then, after the consent calendar, we move on to our discussion items, and our first discussion item is our potential skate park locations. And John Conley will take that.
Thank you, mayor and council. We're here this evening to present on the skate park. Our objective tonight is to obtain direction from the council regarding one or more potential locations for a possible skate park. Quick history, the city first developed a skate park on the Civic Center site in 1999, which was there for about nine years. It was removed in 2008 as a result of construction of the new Civic Center building. In 2007, knowing that the site was going to be removed, the council did review a plan to develop a new skate park facility near the Mona Vista Detention Basin in southeast Vistaoff, South Santa Fe, because we were in the process of designing for construction at that time, the Detention Basin. But in 2009, that plan was abandoned. In 2011, the city formed an ad hoc skate park committee, and we reviewed a number of sites through a multi-week meeting forum session with members of the school district and the Sheriff's Department and other community members. And we made three recommendations to the council at that time for Wildwood Park, Bringle Terrace Park, or the Mona Vista Detention Basin, but none of those sites were approved. So, here we are today, asking again to look at additional sites. We've identified 14 potential locations, all of which were provided to you in the staff report with mapping and some information about each of the sites. I'm not gonna go through each one tonight, but rather give an overview of them, and then we have them attached if you wanna review individual sites. They're both a combination of city-owned properties and privately-owned properties, so there are considerations on both sides of that, depending on which direction you'd like to go. The main criteria that we use in evaluating these sites is taken from the State Skate Park Committee, which includes visibility, proximity to public transportation and infrastructure to serve the site, separation from residential use to the capacity that's possible, and the size of the property being about 10,000 square feet. We also considered in this review of sites which ones included or were listed as qualifying census tracts, which means they have some low-income disadvantaged communities around them, and they may qualify for funding of grants. And we also looked at a separation of sites for skill levels or ages, so that we could look at different sites for maybe a beginner, intermediate, or advanced site, rather than just have one that included everything on one site. So, there's a multiple, there are multiple options, but what we'd like to consider because of the size of some of the facilities is possibly more than one location this evening, so that we can pursue those different options. So, the locations, this is just a summary of where they are. The North Santa Fe Corridor, which extends essentially from Vista Village Drive up to about Indian Rock, includes a majority of the sites because it's, they're all in qualifying census tract areas, and there's a number of excess right-of-way properties up there for when North Santa Fe was wired. when North Santa Fe was widened years ago. Those include sites one through eight, and sites 10 and 11 that are included in the packet. Site number nine is located at Wildwood Park. Sites 12 and 13 are in the Civic Center area, just near Palo Vista Drive at the intersection, and those are identified in the staff report. And there's one site in South Vista that's in Buena Vista Park, down near the Duck Pond. The Parks and Recreation Commission reviewed the staff recommendations at their meeting last night, and they made a unanimous recommendation for two locations, those being numbers one and two in the packet, and those are shown in the overhead. Site number one could be, or was recommended, I'm sorry, for intermediate, advanced facility, and site number two, being slightly smaller, was recommended for a beginner facility. Number one is on North Santa Fe, near West Connecticut, and number two is on Vista Village Drive, near Palm, and I can provide additional information on those sites. At this time, staff requests direction from the council on any preferred sites that they'd like us to further consider. Once we get your input, we'll return to the council at a future date with either plans on how we intend to move forward with city sites, or recommendations for purchase of private properties if that's necessary. And from that point, we'd like to work with the Vista Skate Park Coalition to pursue grant funding for design and ultimately, construction. As I said, I have all of the slides prepared for the individual sites, and I'll be happy to cover those at this time, or I'd be happy to cover them as the discussion moves forward. It's at your discretion. Thank you.
Would you like to see them now, or do you want to see them later? And I also have two speakers. Want to hear the speakers? Okay, we'll go with the speakers right now. So Lisa Flaherty, and then she'll be followed by J.C. Nguyen.
Good evening. I'm Lisa Flaherty with the Vista Skate Park Coalition. On behalf of our board and... It's time to express our thanks to Mayor Ritter, to our council members, city manager, Parks and Recreation Commissioners, and the city staff, who have been so supportive of the coalition, not only of our efforts to bring a skate park back to Vista, but of our other skatable projects, our programs with the Boys and Girls Club of Vista, our charity drives, and our fundraisers. Our thanks for the hard work, time, and effort that the city staff has put into this location research, presentation, and our proposal. After meeting with Parks and Rec last night, it is our sincere hope that the council will consider a location vote this evening. Once a permanent address has been selected, the coalition can begin our grant writing process. We have over 40 grant options available to us at this time. Many are eligible for the underserved neighborhoods, the Tony Hawk Foundation grant, Healthy Kids, et cetera, as well as the grant options that the city has available to them, which we are eager to assist with. In closing, you have our deepest gratitude for keeping this skate park project within your plans for the youth of our community. Thank you.
Thanks, Lisa. J.C. Nguyen?
Hello, council, mayor, and everybody. I'd like to be as grateful as the last speaker was, but I got out of my sick bed today, because I've been feeling well lately, and I put on my Superman shirt to come down here on behalf of the kids of the city of Vista, because I have a few things to say. How long have we been talking about a skateboard park in Vista now? A long time. Okay, how many kids have been killed or injured skating in our streets? A few. The recession's over, the economy's growing, you know, we got city property that they put up on the screen, shows the properties. My personal opinion is, one on North Santa Fe, a kiddie one right here in Wildwood Park, and then one down on Shadow Ridge, so all the kids of our city will have a park to go skate in. And by doing that, that'll help the city of Vista catch up to the other cities like Oceanside, San Marcos, Sancinius, who build skate parks. They just opened a new one in Oceanside, and that makes like three, maybe now three or four in Oceanside. I think that with my coming up here every now and again to talk to the council, get the new people or the old people for all the years that have been coming here, that we have another opportunity here where the city, along with its citizens, can come together and collaborate like we should do on various topics like this, you know? Where we get together and we get grants from people from our community, and maybe grants from the city of Vista, and we get some going on this. No more talking, no more studying, no more, and on and on and on. We gotta get something going, and I think now's the time, we got pictures of places to go. I really don't see why maybe by summer, we couldn't have at least one done. That's my thing. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, I hope you feel better. I also have another speaker, Arubie Lopez. Aru, how do I say that? Arubey. Sorry, I murdered it.
Hello, council. My name is Arubey Lopez, and I am a Parks and Recreation Commissioner. We've been working on this issue for a really long time, and every year, we send a recommendation to the council saying that it's time that we're behind this project 100 percent, and that's what we did last night. But in addition, I wanted to comment on Property One in particular. My office is located next to, next to Property One, and we've been there for a while, and the lot next to it is empty. When I moved in there, I know the city tries to take care of the building as much as possible, but I myself have been out there with a weed eater, cleaning up the property because it's been vacant and abandoned for a really long time. If we put a skate park there, we could make it really nice, really pretty, aesthetically pleasing, green. And again, in a spirit of anti-nimbyism, I, as a neighbor of that location, am saying that the people in that location would welcome it, would be really happy to it. I've spoken to, there's four businesses there. One of them is Tiffany Soccer League, and they work with youth, and they are happy anytime anything is done with, to help our youth. One of the other owners, his name is Alejandro, he does taxes, and he has a funny story about skating. He has a nephew who skates, and he skates all over the city, but he won't skate at Norcoast Church. And we asked him, why won't you skate at Norcoast Church? There's all that place there. He's like, well, every time we go to try to skate at Norcoast, instead of kicking us out, they want us to join, and they embrace us and want us. And I think if we took that attitude with our youth, that instead of kicking them out and saying, "No," not in my backyard, we'd say, "Yes, we're going to build this park for you." I also think that we can talk about this a lot, but I would really, it would be really great if tonight, we made a specific recommendation for Site One and Two, and that would really get the momentum. Thank you very much.
That's actually our last speaker, so I'm open to, aha, councilwoman Rigby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, staff, for doing this, Mr. Conley and Mr. Fort Mueller, and everybody who did the research on this, and to the Skate Park Coalition for a lot of your research and helping with this. As a former Parks and Recreation Commissioner myself, this has been on our agenda for as long as I can remember. I know it's hard to put a date on this when we first started talking about it. So I'm excited to see that we're, we're really have some, something tangible within our grasp, that we can do this for the youth of our community. That's very exciting, because we are dreadfully behind the times in getting some skate parks and skate pods in our community for the youth. So these were two of the locations, and going through all of these, and I actually drove the city with the city manager and had a tour of all city properties in order to find something that we could use and that would be viable. And these are two of the ones that were on my list that I thought would be viable, as well as I had a couple of other ones on here that I liked. I liked the one in Olive, I guess, let's see, Olive and Vista Village. I thought that was a larger lot that provided for more parking. That's the question I had particularly on the one for Site Number Two. How much parking would you be considering putting in that site? Would there be any parking at all?
We would have to evaluate that as part of the design, but yes, the intent would be to put at least, you know, a few spaces there for parking off the street on-site. That would be a primary objective, but of course, that's going to be dependent upon which site we choose. We'll do our best to provide for that.
Right, understood.
Yeah, I think tonight, we want to stay away from engineering, design, and all of that, and just stick with locations, and then they'll come back to us.
Right, no, I understand that, but it's hard to pick a location if you're not sure exactly what you can fit on it. I mean, I don't want to say, "Yes, let's pick this one," and then come to find out we can't do. But the other question I had for you is regarding Shadow Ridge area, because you've identified two, and the Parks and Recreation Commission has fully supported 100 percent the first two options that are over on two different parts of town and north. But on the south, in South Vista Communities, we do have a large population of young kids over there. And in that demographic, one of the things that we learned in touring and visiting with the kids is they're not always able to access far, far away, because they're skateboarders, a lot of them aren't driving yet. So if we choose, you know, one of these or both of these sites for the beginning and advanced skate parks, that won't preclude us in the future, I'm hoping, to put something in South Vista Communities and the Shadow Ridge area. And is that opportunity still available along Shadow Ridge by the Duck Pond? Would that be something that we could think about continuing to do? Because I think it's really important that we get, if I had my brothers, I'd have a skate pod in every park, I'd have a big park in every part of the city, in every neighborhood, and nobody'd have to drive, but I understand our limitations. I just want to make sure that we're still open to options in South Vista Communities.
Absolutely.
Okay.
At this point, we're trying to identify some primary sites for the start, but this is, will be a continuing process that we can evaluate.
Continuing process. Okay. That answered all of my questions. I'm good with the, with these two, as, there are several on here. The one I would not want to see, however, would be Wildwood Park. I think if we tried to put something in Wildwood Community Park, if you go over there on the weekends, you see the park is just filled with birthday parties, there was a wedding over there this weekend, it's just packed with people having fun all the time, and I think it would take too much of that park away from the visiting community that's using it as park space to put a skate park in there, and I wouldn't want to do that. So that would be the very bottom of my list, would be Wildwood.
Maureen, did I miss you as a speaker? Did you want to speak? Right now? Did I miss, did I miss you? Oh, Winifred. Okay, I'm gonna have her speak, and then we'll go to, okay, okay. I'm sorry, I, your card got lost.
Thank you. I may have not filled it out properly anyways, because I didn't come off.
You did okay, it just, there were two items on there, and I think I got stuck with the second one, so.
Yeah, I did. I just wanted to say that I am a proponent of the skate park, and I've been that way since before the other one had to leave. And my interest in it is to make it a place that, and I think some of these designs will be, that the general public can get a view of it, can stop by, senior citizens, people can look at them, watch them doing it, admire their skills, and I'm happy about the various levels of skills, abilities, that they can start off little ones, and then, you know, come up to the super guys, super jump ones. I like it all, and obviously, not in the exact same place, but I think it would be great for this community and for the, for the young people to know that we care enough about what they like, as well as what we have here for us, what, you know, golly, there's so many things we've done for ourselves, for, we have a wonderful arts programs and all these other things. And this is actually a gift it will be in the long term for all of us. I hope that it comes out great, and maybe someday, we'll have some future skateboard Olympians coming from Vista, and we'll be glued to the TV watching them. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so councilwoman Coles.
Thank you. Well, it has been a long time coming to where we've had this item on the agenda with a very supportive audience, and I think a supportive council. So thank you for your patience, Skateboard Coalition, and potential users of our parks. And I think we're probably ready to make a definitive move forward here tonight. I want to thank the Parks and Rec Commission for considering so many sites thoroughly, and we could make arguments for it against all the sites, but we've had a pretty intensive review by staff and the commission to recommend Sites One and Two, and I see this as a start, sort of like councilwoman Rigby has mentioned. I would also like to see something at some point in the south part of the city as well. There's a population of young people there that could benefit for that. Factors that make these sites, I think, very attractive to start with is that they're in a zone that would allow us to seek grants and additional funding that we might not otherwise get for some of the other locations. We have the potential of, this is a kind of a dynamic area, we've got the new gymnasium going in, the sports center going in at Vapa right nearby. It creates sort of a corridor of youth activities, and my purpose is to keep this on a positive note, so that we have young people who are actively engaged in a positive sport, in a productive sport, with a future. The visibility for both these parks, if you look at the locations, it gives high visibility for onlookers, for traffic, for law enforcement in the event that incidents occur, which, you know, they do happen. And this gives us a chance to, to keep things in good control, and I certainly am prepared to, after we finish the discussion, go along with the recommendation that has been brought to us tonight. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Aguilera.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, first, I'd like to start off with congratulating Jack and Lisa. I think you guys have done a fantastic job in promoting this and keeping this in front of council, and city manager, and Vista in general. You did it very professionally and with a lot of hard work, so thank you very much for your work. I also want to thank, you know, Skateboard Coalition as a whole, because they've put a lot of hard work in as well, and done a lot of positive things in the community, and given back to the community. I know they do, you know, the Build Your Own Skateboard, and teaching kids how to skate at the Boys and Girls Club. I've participated in some of those events, and, you know, that really has gone a long ways, showing council and the city that you really do care about the community, and you are giving back positively to the community. I also want to thank Parks and Rec for their hard work, and I know it's frustrating working with city government, but you're part of it too. And, you know, this is how we make our decisions sometimes, you know? We have some good ideas, and what may seem like a good idea to one, you know, another person's going to point out, you know, maybe some potential drawbacks. But I think after all this going back and forth, I think we've come up with some, some great suggestions. I want to thank staff for doing that. Originally, well, my preference for a skateboard park would be to go with a city-owned property. We own a lot of different properties, there's no reason, in my opinion, to go out and purchase a private property and haggle with any property owners out there. We have some properties that aren't being used right now, so let's put them to good use. And the second preference I have is separate properties for the advanced and new skaters. I think it's a good idea to have them separate, because we've got probably kids that are seven, eight years old, up to 12 years old, that are just learning how to skate. May not be a good mix next door or in the same park with potentially adults, 18 to 25-year-olds, or just older kids. I think it's a good idea to have some separation. And then, the third condition I was looking for is, right now, I would not prefer to use any existing parks, because I think what we want to do here is have a net positive to the city in parks, not a, you know, a break even. So I think by adding property to the city for, or city parks, I think that's a net positive to the city and the community. So I think that's, that's a positive that I want to really look for. I want to really look for, or a condition, I should say. Originally, I had hoped for the options of three and two. And I'll tell you why three and two were my initial options. Well, three was just by itself. And the reason is just because of surrounding properties. I thought a skateboard park would have the least amount of impact to the community there. But after this hearing from our fellow Parks Commissioner and knowing, because I didn't know that he had his business there next door to property one, that was nice to hear from him and supporting it and that some of the businesses that are in that area are supporting it as well. So I've changed my mind from what I thought I initially was gonna, you know, support up here, back to one and two. And that would, two is gonna, you know, keep that separation of the two parks. And I, I think it's important to have the kid lot, you know, the starter or beginner lot. And I think that's necessary. So, at this time, that's what I'm supporting is one and two. And I think that's it.
Thank you. Actually, you, you said everything I was gonna say.
Well, I got your notes, so.
[laughing] And actually, it's interesting, because I supported one and two and, and three was the other one that I was looking at. But then I also was looking at number, I think it was number 10, the, I thought they'd be like bookends there, you know, in that, but then I decided that was too high up there. So I, I'm supportive of the, with the staff's recommendation of the one, or the Parks and Rec's recommendation of those two. So, and I love the idea of the two parks, because I think, I remember when my grandkids used to come to the one that was over here and, and, you know, there were more experienced kids there and they were a little scared to be there. So I, I love the idea of having the one for the beginners and one for more advanced. And I also think city-owned property is important, so we don't have to make, you know, haggle with people over price on, on some other property. So, those are the same ones that I, we all like the same ones, actually. So, I guess with that, is that enough direction? Or what would you like, or do you want us to make a motion to make of those two? Or what do you want us to do? You want to make a motion to?
I'd make a motion to move forward with further analysis and recommendation to look at sites one and two for further consideration to get started on this.
But, well, can we keep the one, uh, uh, over in Shadow Ridge, just on the?
Yeah, yeah, well.
And if these don't work out?
Part of that would be to keep these other sites in our inventory for, if something were to fall through with one of these unexpectedly, we don't want to give up on the other sites that we've looked at. So, I, I think our priority at this point is to explore, my recommenda-, or my motion would be to explore sites one and two for further consideration and action on the part of the council to proceed, but keep the other sites in reserve for future consideration.
Do you have a second?
Second it, yeah.
Okay. Well, come on. Okay, please cast your votes. That motion passes unanimously. Yay! Moving forward, moving forward. That's great news. Uh, let's see. The next thing on our agenda, D2, Central Vista Business Improvement District Advisory Board Recommendations. So, we're going to have, Kevin Hamm is going to present that report. And we're gonna focus tonight on the administration of the bid and not, not get into other particulars.
[inaudible]
Oh, I don't think you're on.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Since 2002, the city has contracted with Vista Village Business Association, better known as the VVBA, for administration of the Central Vista Business Improvement District, the CVBID. The VVBA is a downtown organization that works to improve the downtown and helps merchants. And the CVBID is a completely separate mechanism to help market downtown merchants and activities. In 2001, the council modified the CVBID agreement with the VVBA to assist with cash flow challenges by providing city funds and collected fees at the start of the fiscal year. Concurrent with this change, the council modified the CVBID advisory board to include seven members appointed by the city council, all of which are businesses within the district and are assessed fees. Three of the seven are recommended by the VVBA for appointment. The annual agreement for CVBID administration currently includes a $40,000 matching city grant, as well as payment of CVBID fees of approximately $62,000 a year. Over the last year, the CVBID contractor, the VVBA, has experienced organizational challenges. Due to these issues, the advisory board for the CVBID reviewed the performance of the VVBA as the CVBID contractor. Attached as Exhibit 3 is a summary of the accomplishments compiled by the VVBA while undertaking their contractual obligations under this agreement. The advisory board spent many months evaluating the performance of the VVBA under this agreement and received input from many interested parties. The full text of their recommendation is attached as Exhibit 2. A summary of their recommendation states, "The CVBID advisory board would like to recommend that the options for management of the bid be evaluated, reevaluated by the City of Vista. As the landscape of the bid is rapidly changing, it is an opportune time for all parties to re-envision the potential and future of the bid. A committee of interested and affected parties could work with the City of Vista to re-envision how best to serve the bid. It is a hope of the CVBID advisory board that new opportunities and ideas will come forth to benefit this, the Business Improvement District, the City of Vista, and the residents of Vista." Given the recommendation of the advisory board, staff has identified the following options for management of the CVBID for council consideration this evening. Number one, continue with the CVBID advisory board providing oversight of the CVBID and continue with the VVBA as the CVBID administrator. And that's the existing arrangement. Continuing the existing arrangement may provide continuity between the city and the contractor, reducing the learning curve for administering the CVBID. However, this would be status quo, and concerns have been raised about the VVBA's ability to successfully provide the required services. Option two, continue with the CVBID advisory board providing oversight and contract with a different nonprofit or contractor for implementation of the district. Soliciting new, soliciting proposals for a new party to administer the CVBID could provide new options and someone with more experience working with business districts. In addition, negotiating a new contract could provide an opportunity to reduce the city's costs. However, there may be a learning curve for the new management entity. Staff recommends that you receive the recommendation from the advisory board, discuss the options, and provide direction to staff on how you'd like to proceed. This concludes my report. And I would also like to mention Maureen Barick, who's the chairperson of the Central Vista Business Improvement District Advisory Board, is here this evening to answer any questions you might have. Also, Cliff Kaiser, the president of the VVBA, is here this evening. And he has a short presentation that he would like to provide you this evening as well.
Thank you, Kevin. So do you want, is it okay if we do the, Cliff Kaiser have his speakers? Okay, Cliff Kaiser. Don Heine, is he gonna help you?
Thank you, Mayor, Council, and thank you, Kevin. I have with me Don Heine, who is going to do a portion of this presentation. I will say that although I understand the time limitations, I'll need a little bit more time than the average. First off, the VVBA... How about, next? VVBA has been around for over 25 years, running the Vista Business District in the downtown area, advocating for businesses, bringing activities to the downtown area. Our immediate goal, next, oh.
Does that work?
Yeah. Our immediate goal is to address the issues that have been raised and, in essence, focus on the, focus actions that the VVBA must do to complete its mission. Eliminate actions that we've seen in the past that have distracted from achieving that mission and hold firmly to the Main Street program. It's a National Trust Association. Hold firmly to those attributes. We intend to provide stewardship and demonstrable value to the, to the city and to the funds, the taxpayers, and the city grant funds. This will lead the bid members, as well as the other stakeholders in the downtown area, to see the value that the VVBA adds. The essence of our mission as a downtown organization is to enhance and enliven the downtown area and enhance and enliven Vista. Support the existing businesses that are there, help encourage new businesses to come, host and encourage events that bring people to the downtown area to visit those businesses. In our efforts to achieve that mission, we have hired and engaged two part-time staff people to help us as a board to execute that mission. They are here with us today, Julie Capora, a longtime marketing executive, and Steve Eastus, a Main Street consultant, as well as an event, a lot of expertise in event staffing. They are with us here today. And I encourage you to talk with them if you have that opportunity. We've heard and read and analyzed the CVBID advisory board, the CAB, concerns or red flags. We've talked to bid members, Don and I, and others. We've talked to our partners and the other stakeholders. They've got our attention. We intend to make changes and we are earnestly trying to achieve those changes. Some of the specific concerns that have been raised by the CAB, I'm gonna address just a couple of those. High board turnover. VVBA's board is made up of a lot of volunteers, all volunteers, that have a variety of conflicting interests, workload, scheduling conflicts, things like that. The contributions of all these board members that have been in the VVBA in this past year and before that is significant, as it is in the chamber and other nonprofit organizations, and we very much appreciate that. We hope that they will return. They're encouraged to return to the VVBA as a board member, as a committee member, as just an interested volunteer at some time in the future, as any of their concerns are remedied. And we hope to remedy them. Another concern that the CAB had is the VVBA leadership. Yes, there's been a lot of turnover. We've lost our executive director and that's why we've brought these two interim people on board. I have become the new president of the VVBA here in the last week or so, and we've had new board members like Don. Jack is fairly new to our board as well. We think that we have a strong team in place and it's getting stronger all the time. We continue to reach outreach to all areas of the, of the business district, zones A, B, and C. And we think that, that was a positive, actually a positive finding of the advisory board. This is the current makeup of our board. Our bylaws call for 12 to 15, and we fully intend to have them fully on board here over the next couple of months and as the new fiscal year starts July 1st. At this point, I'd like to ask Don to speak a little bit about his involvement in this effort.
Good evening. My name's Don Heine. I'm the owner of Little Cakes Cupcake Kitchen and a new board member of the VVBA. Several business owners and managers in the area owned by DDR have recently started attending monthly marketing meetings. We call them the Vista Village Committee meetings. And we create and then bring ideas to the VVBA, mostly through my membership as the board of directors, but also by joining other committees. As a result, the voices of many bid members, including Craycorian Theaters, Lamp Post Pizza, Backstreet Brewery, El Calahone, Little Cakes Cupcake Kitchen, and many more, we now feel like we have a voice with the VVBA. And based on a recent survey we've done, the VVBA now has overwhelming support from the majority of the businesses in the DDR area, as well as South Santa Fe. And we have signed documentation that supports this. Additionally, we've seen strong support recently from Denise Wells, who just had a very strong, successful grand opening with 50 barrels. She has expressed her interest rejoining the VVBA Promotions Committee. We've also heard from Dan Love, co-owner of Mother Earth, who expressed how important it is to him that Vista retains its Main Street certification, which is overseen currently by the VVBA. These and many more individuals, we feel they're just waiting at the wings, eager for an opportunity to assist in the mission of the VVBA. It seems like everyone I talk to all believes in the mission of the VVBA. So it is our goal to seek them out and retain them as committee and/or board members by resolving the issues at hand and getting back to work, basically.
Thank you, Don. Another area of concern by the CAB, one of their red flags is VVBA events. Some events have been turned over to other entities, or they may not have been executed as well as they could have. But the fact of the matter is, an event may be profitable or not, and even if it is profitable, it still takes a heavy workload on paid staff that diminishes that profit, which may not show on the bottom line. And there's also a heavy volunteer burnout. We've seen that, I've seen that on the chamber. I think the chamber still does that. And it's, it's always a challenge. We do, we did negotiate with the chamber to turn over the Vista Strawberry Festival entirely to them, and they gave us the Taste of Vista entirely. It allows us to manage that better. It helps our relationship when we had some, some challenges in executing that event. Rod Run Taste of Vista is gonna continue this year, as well as the other events under other management. The discussions regarding the Barbecue Festival and the Rhythm and Brews Festival are in progress. Don and I met just before we came to this meeting regarding the Rhythm Brews Festival, and we're gonna be a part of that event. And the, the bottom line, though, is the chamber or the VVBA or some other entity creates the seed for an event, grows it, test markets it, it's okay, it works out, then it's okay if somebody else takes it. Or even if somebody else wants to come in from outside and they just say, hey, VVBA, you know, we want to do this. Hey, city, we want to do this. If it happens in downtown, if it brings people in downtown, it's, it's, it meets our mission. So we're going to encourage that. I'm gonna skip through this one real quick, if you'll forgive me, but I do have some comments on, by Don on the investment from the DDR area.
The businesses in the DDR area and South Santa Fe have been investing for years now in the VVBA through our assessments. While in the past we have not seen a strong return on these investments, we feel like with the upcoming slate of events planned by the VVBA, we think that's going to change. Rod Run, Taste of Vista, and a Winterfest event are all scheduled to be included in the DDR area. DDR is very open to doing these events. And just this past weekend, the very successful Safety Day event would not have happened without the support of the VVBA. We look forward to the return on the investment in the coming year, and we have signed documents again showing the support of these businesses in funding the VVBA.
Another concern that the CAB raised was our Main Street certification. We did receive a long letter from the California Main Street Alliance saying that you need to improve in these areas or deliver in these other areas. We are diligently working on those areas. We just delivered a report yesterday, as a matter of fact. And our next deadline for three or four action items is March 31st with a couple others in April. And I'm very confident that we will continue to maintain that certification, which is valued by many in the downtown area, as well as just a prestigious thing to have in, in all of California. In short, and my conclusion is, VVBA's been around for a long time. We're gonna initiate these actions. We're gonna eliminate the distractions. We're making the changes. We've heard what people have to say. We've heard from the CAB. We've heard from the business members. We've heard from the other stakeholders. We recognize that there's been some execution and operations issues, and there's new people to help move this along, and we'll continue to get some strong leaders in there. It's in the DNA. It's in our blood as VVBA organization to create a vibrant downtown, and that is in our intention. We like what some of the things that you guys are helping us do, like bring in that mixed-use place right across from Sonic. We're hoping the GA project gets kicked off here sometime to create even more vibrancy in the downtown. Additionally, the VVBA just past year brought in an additional $40,000 in grant money from the county of San Diego to help bring some murals and some lighting and bike racks to the downtown area that are very classy. We've worked with the Vista Arts Foundation to start a discussion on the culture of our arts district, and we're very excited. So, I, I guess what I'm saying is that, yes, VVBA has had challenges in the last year and perhaps beyond that. But we think, we're confident going forward that we can deliver on providing that value. This quote here by Eddie Robinson, "We're basically ready to engage in that fight and move..." ready to engage in that fight and move forward to provide that value." Thank you. And we're available for questions, comments?
Thank you. They might have some later. We'll get our speakers, and then we may have some questions later. Winifred Meiser.
Hi. I'm also speaking again as just a resident of this town, and I appreciate all the efforts that these volunteers and business people take from their own lives and time and their business system, keep the flow of the lifeblood of this community going with a lot of different events and community, especially family activities. I was at the kids' safety day the other day, and I can tell you, it's just one of the threads that make up the fabric of any town. But I was taking a lot of pictures because that's what I do, and I wanted to, you know, take pictures of the activities of each group that was participating. One of the moments in time that I felt was, I was a witness to a watershed moment in somebody's life, was when the Army booth there was, young man was talking with a local resident. He had a baby in his arms, and he was trying to find whether he would qualify to be an Army. And this full regala, young serviceman was encouraging him, and I was really touched listening to, obviously, the young man had some issues about not being, not being a graduate of the high school, maybe having a little run-in with the local police, but the serviceman wasn't giving him up. He was encouraging him to look through and see where he could get back on the mainstream of life and look after his family. I just was so touched by all of it. And this was just an example of the people interaction that come to these kind of things, kids doing learning things and meeting up with the police officers or firefighters and seeing them as a friendly face, not just some authority figure. So I salute all these people who do all the different things and attend all those booths, wherever it is, all done by the volunteer spirit. I hope that they all have a chance to keep that going. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom Flamin.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. Just a couple of things quickly this evening. The first off is, I support option two. One of the reasons that I do, I don't want to imply that I don't think that that presentation that Cliff made was not an excellent presentation, and I look forward to VVBA being successful that way. My concern is that over the last several years, when this time rolls around each year, the one comment that I hear from the city council members over and over again is, "One more year." You know, "Well, that sounds really good, so let's give them one more year." That's why I support option two. I think the one more year ought to be that option two is used, but you have the VVBA get on their feet for a year. Let Cliff and those that he's bringing on that's doing a good job be successful in what they're doing. Words are great, but let's let them demonstrate it to us. I'm still concerned about the makeup of the board itself. The new people coming on are great. I think that's a great opportunity. The promotional things are things that can be done with or without the bid fees. I mean, they've got people that will do these activities. They've got the Chamber will do them. They've got people that will do the barbecue that are willing to run that for running it and make their money on it. So little things like that. The VVBA has been a successful program for a number of years. I have been part of it. I've been very active in it for a number of those years. I support the VVBA working and getting better, but I support option two in the meantime, in the year until they do. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Maureen, did you want to talk, or just want to wait in case there's questions?
Is there any more speakers?
Nope, that's all our speakers.
Yeah, I'll talk.
Mayor Ritter, city council members, ladies and gentlemen. My name's Maureen Derrick, and I have a business in the downtown. I'm also a member of the VVBA and currently Chair of the CVBID, and it was our committee's challenge to oversee this. And I would like to say that the reason the committee was set up was for that purpose, and I think it worked in this case. I think we raised some red flags, and I'm really happy to see the response that has come out of that. The downtown is changing really rapidly. I've been down there for close to seven years now. People just, you know, it was like I can remember on a Saturday, it's like, "Oh, I saw five couples walking," you know, "in the last five hours," by just strolling around. Now it's like, you know, five couples in 20 minutes. It's really nice to see all the vibrancy downtown. A lot of that does come from what's going on with the VVBA. When I moved in there, Janet was president. They came in and they greeted me. They introduced me to other businesses there. And now I can't walk down the street without planning an hour to stop and talk to this person and that person. And it's a really nice community feeling, which is something that we really need to enrich our lives. So I'd like to thank you all for listening to the voices of the people here. I'm going to go down a little list of notes I made here. The communication that the VVBA offers as well between Kevin Hamm representing the city and what's going on downtown, I think that's a really invaluable thing. So I have to say, even though our committee raised red flags, it's a good organization when it's run properly, and it's not easy to run an organization volunteer-driven. So I do think they're learning that they need a very strong leadership on that. So, two things in closing. I personally, not as the chairman of the committee, but as a downtown business, support option one and two. I think, I think for the next year, you fund them with, and then you make a plan that you will put an RFP out, which they can apply for and show their accomplishments and go forward. So option one for the short term, it's, this is kind of like, if anybody knows the shipping industry, you have to plan miles ahead to turn a ship. So we really have to think out forward. We have to think progressively, but if you go with option one and then option two, and make that the plan, that puts the pressure on the whole next fiscal year for them to make the positive changes, and make them so that they last. It's nice to have a strong leadership now, but if they don't groom the strong leadership for the future, then we will be back doing this over and over again. But if you put a little pressure on them for then on, and then you also buy the Economic Development Department a little time to, okay, this is going to be our annual thing, that we put out an RFP, make sure we have the right options for the future, and you have time to do that. It's rather short time now to put that RFP out. So my last closing statement is a story, and I'll make it short. I had dinner last night with somebody, and we were just chatting, and she says, "Oh, I came down here Saturday with my daughter and her friends." We started out at Art Beat, and we hung out there for a while, and then the girls wanted to go to the Apothecary, so we walked over to the Apothecary, and then, of course, we couldn't not go to Metaphor. So we all went over to Metaphor. Then we came back for the 50 Barrels opening. They're older girls. And then they finished, they said they had to finish off their day at the Cupcakes Store. So I just think that's what our downtown's all about. That's the changes we're seeing. That's, that's, so we really need to somehow still support in a positive way what's going on down there. Thank you. Do you have any questions for me?
Maybe in a minute. We'll see what the kind of discussion goes, and if they have any, we can call you up. So don't leave yet. Okay, so I don't see any speakers. Does anybody have any questions or have any, anything to say? Hello out there.
Pardon me. I have a couple of questions. So I'm understanding from you, Maureen, that despite the letter that said you would like the city to reevaluate the VVBA's position as a contractor for the bid, you would like for us to now consider keeping them on and not going by your committee's recommendation. That's what I'm hearing you say.
In essence, I suppose that is, but I'm speaking as my business owner. It was my job on the committee to raise the red flags. The red flags were raised, and we had a response right away. Changes were made, and the direction, it's suddenly like you saw the ship turning. You know, I just, I just think it's, my own mental, I'm seeing what the hard work they're doing and the efforts, and I also know that it's not going to be easy to just suddenly cut them off, and then what's, who's going to manage the money? We still, we recommended also that you, we continue the bid. We continue collecting the fees. So if they're on an upswing, maybe I'm on Team Cliff.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay. That answered my question. Thank you. I did, I was going to ask Cliff how many board positions that were filled or how many were vacant. So out of the 12 to 15, you have, you have one vacancy. And with the board members, I know that there are a few who actually are not bid members. How many are members of the board that are not bid members?
There are three active bid members of those 11, so eight are not bid members. But we also have conflict, not conflicting, but different rules that we abide. The bid itself requires or encourages bid members to be part of that advisory board, and they are, in fact, on that advisory board. The Main Street Association invites anybody that has an interest in making vibrancy in downtown, business members within the area, outside the area, residents, whatever.
Right. I read Laura's letter from December 17th where she talks about that, which brings me to another question I have. In attending the meetings as the council liaison to the VVBA, on the December 17th letter that Laura from, Laura Coles from the California Main Street Alliance, or CAMSA as it's referred to, had sent you a letter that the former executive director, Brigitte Taylor, received, and there were some recommendations and timelines to continue with the Main Street program in Vista. And I know that you, there are some that the deadline is March 31st, and some that the deadline has already passed. Now, the last time I was at a meeting that we spoke about this, one item had been completed, which was the payment of the dues, and then subsequently the hiring of the executive director and the consultant, Julie and Steve. The other items that the expiration date has passed, you were granted additional time for those, correct?
That's correct. And so all the action items, other than the March 31st and beyond, have been completed. Not by the date of those letters. We got extensions, but they are complete.
So, I'm sorry, so you're saying now all these have been completed except the ones that the due date was originally March? Which, which items have been done? The work plans for each committee? Because I know a week ago they weren't done, so I'm just wondering how much progress have we made in this last week?
Well, in summary, if it has a due date beyond today, it's still due.
Right. No, I understand, but you had some that were.
If it has a due date before today, it has been completed.
It has been completed.
So the reports, the recruitment plan, the executive director, all those items with February 28th, January 31st dates have been completed. The annual report has been submitted. The committee has five members. Those are, those are things that you're referring to in this report.
Okay. Because I know Wednesday of last week they hadn't been, but I will take your word for it.
They have been working very hard, I assure you.
Okay. Thank you. I will take your word for that. The other concern that has been brought up, and as the CVBID letter had alluded to, there have been many complaints to the city regarding VVBA and some of the issues that have been going on. And one of the complaints was about some of the longevity of some of the board members. And I know that in some of the meetings, it's been, the phrase termed out has been used. And so some of the board members that have been on the board for a long time would actually be rotating off the board. I wanted to know how long those people who will be termed out have actually been on the board. Do you know the answer to that?
I do not know how long their history is on the board. I do know that we have two people that have been there, under my observation, a long time, that are termed out at the end of this fiscal year, June 30th. And they have, beyond the fact that they have to take a year off, they have also assured us that they are leaving. So in essence, we're recruiting for six new members, because at 11, with those two leaving, that's nine. We're recruiting for six members to get to the full board strength of 15.
Okay. Now, one of the other red flags that have been brought up, not only by CAMSA, but also by CVBID, and also the city was reporting, and I know that Kevin Hamm had asked for a document called the Source of Use of Funds, and that had been requested a couple of times. Has that been received yet?
Yes, they gave it to us last week and allowed us to see whether or not they'd be able to get through the end of the current fiscal year, and I think Cliff sent it to me Friday at about noon.
And the answer to that particular question was?
Well, it looks like they're gonna, it's going to be tight to the end of the year. Looks like they're going to be at right at about $0, maybe a little bit negative, depending upon the calculations they use.
Right. It depends on the projections, on the sponsorships we bring in for the couple of events we have left in this fiscal year, and of course, how well we manage the expenses for the remainder time. But I should also point out that this is an ongoing struggle with the VVBA every year. As they reach the end of the fiscal year, they're dependent on those last few events helping them stay in the black.
All right. Okay, thank you. Because that was one of the concerns, was that the VVBA in the past had been delinquent with reports all the way around to the city, to the CVBID, as well as to CAMSA. So I just wanted to see how we were doing.
Well, I can tell you that we are. You know, the, some of the action items for the CAMSA, we had to get extensions on. We still owe the advisory board a quarterly report that they asked to have updated. That's still in progress. We owe the advisory board some completed or revised minutes. So we are working feverishly to deliver on those things, and then once we catch our breath, put the fires out, we'll get into a stable process where they get that stuff in a timely manner.
Okay. And I'm looking at my notes. I have a few pages of questions here.
Sorry. I just wanted to speak, if I could speak just really quickly about bid members being on the board. Being a bid member, I was very interested in trying to get on the board, and DDR was very, you know, encouraging of getting us on the board. And, you know, being a business owner, especially with a lot of franchises and other corporate offices or corporate businesses in the DDR area, it can be very difficult for them to do any volunteer time. So that's in many reasons why we created this VVC. The idea is that it's sort of an arm that reaches out. It's an arm of the VVBA. So by having me as a board member, one of the things I had on the signature form, it says, "We, the undersigned, believe that Don Heine, owner of Little Cakes Cupcake Kitchen, will accurately represent our business when standing on the Board of Directors for the Vista Village Business Association by openly communicating with us via the Vista Village Center meetings and other communications." So basically, to try and allow them to go to one meeting where we could gather our thoughts and ideas and then have representatives, excuse me, going to the VVBA. So that's kind of one way to get lots of board, or lots of bid business ideas going into the VVBA. And the goal is to do a similar action with South Santa Fe. There's a signature form for that as well, and then possibly with the Main Street or other locations.
Okay, thank you. Well, I guess that pretty much answers the general questions that I had. My thoughts are, in attending the meetings, and I've only been the representative for this year, starting January, so I've been to three meetings, but we have had this discussion at council before regarding... But we have had this discussion at council before regarding the VVBA, and in years past before I was on council, of course, you know, it was no secret that there were issues. So there, I still have some reservations about some of the issues that the VVBA still suffers from. I am hopeful, because like Maureen said, being on, you know, having some new board members and some new blood, and I think you have some good dynamic with some of the new board members, I still have concerns about some of the existing board members. So it's, this is a tough decision, because we do hear the same song and dance, we heard it last year as well, you know, things will change, things will be different, because this past year is not the only year that concerns with the VVBA have been raised. So anyway, I'm, those are the comments that I have.
I would offer two comments to that particular part of it. One is, we've already demonstrated some change, and I think that's been pretty dramatic as far as the VVBA goes. In terms of getting new people on board, getting new leadership, getting new staff. So we've demonstrated some change. The other part is that I believe it's not for another couple of months, you actually have to make a funding decision.
Right.
And so, while Mr. Fleming mentioned, well, give the year, give them a year, I'm saying, give us three months, give us two or three months to see what we can do. The change that we've instituted now will continue, you'll be able to see it, you'll be able to see us deliver before you make that final sign, signature on the dotted line.
Okay, thank you. I have no further comments or questions at this point. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Deputy Madam Aguilera.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, I'd like to thank the advisory board for their work. You know, we appointed that board, I guess, about two years ago or so. And so it's been a long haul, and you guys have done a very thorough job. So, Maureen, I want to thank you and the board for the work you've done for the city. You don't get paid to do that, and we appreciate that. You know, the, the subject really is the bid here. You know, what to do with that. It's about $100,000. The way I look at it is $60,000 of it is a direct tax on our downtown businesses, and another 40,000 is contributed by the city as a whole, because I believe that comes right out of our general fund. So this, these are tax dollars of the citizens of Vista, and we have all been elected here to look over that pot of money, along with the rest. Having said that, it is unfortunate that things have kind of changed around here in the last few weeks for this organization. But I, I was here two years ago, and I was one of the ones asking for change. And, you know, it is somewhat the same story. And I hate to say that, because I think we do have some good people that have been elected to this board. The analogy of the ship and riding that ship, you know, well, two years ago, he was heading in the wrong direction. And as you said, Maureen, it takes a long time to turn that, and the last three weeks hasn't turned it yet. Maybe it's heading in the right direction, but we won't know, maybe for another year. Couple of things I want to talk about, that I think, they're in the report, but just for the public to know. We've had several presidents for this organization in the last couple of years, not even going back the full 25 years. Board turnover, as the agenda report states, 10 in the last year. That doesn't go back two or three years, where I know we're in more double digits for board turnover there. There's poor performance, as stated by an outside agency, the Main Street Organization. After I read that letter, I was definitely disappointed, and I know, you know, the VVBA was disappointed as well. Again, our funding from the bid is going to the VVBA, so these are things we have to look at. Definitely disappointed to hear about the Strawberry Festival. I know there may be underlying reasons that we're not aware of, business decisions that were made, trade-offs. And I'm not aware of how those work, the bottom line works for your organization. But that's been a very successful event here at the City of Vista. And I know that the Chamber's involved with that as well. But there's other events that have been dropped, and, you know, it's just, we're not sure where this organization is heading. Getting, I mentioned the Main Street letter again. And then tonight, hearing that we only have three bid members on the board, out of 11? Is that right? Okay. And you have to recruit six. It's almost like we're dealing with a startup again. And I think that's the way you're probably gonna have to handle it, and I understand that. And I, I want the VVBA to be successful. And I think it can be. I think that you have a formidable president, you have some, some good board members that are stepping up. But I'll tell you my short little story about VVBA recently, and that's the tree lighting. I was excited about the tree lighting, because that's something we've done for the last few years with my family. Took my daughter down there, and ran into the mayor, and about maybe five other people. And I had no idea what the changes were, I didn't expect any changes. But I swear to you, we probably had five, maybe eight people total. Mr. Underdahl was there, former bed, former board member of VVBA, for short-lived, but former. He was there to support with his family, and--
Our families.
Yeah. We lit the tree. And, you know, the Chamber down the street had hundreds of people at their event. I went down, I went down there, because the mayor says, "You gotta get some of those people over here." I go down there, none of them want to leave, because they're having a great time at their event. And I'm thinking to myself, as I'm walking back to the tree lighting event, why aren't these two organizations working together? I mean, this is all for the City of Vista, this is for our downtown area. This is our businesses. So the current board was not probably involved with that, but I mean, this is some of the things that I'm seeing out there from two years ago. I mean, this wasn't just this, this past December. So the ship, I don't think, has been righted yet. And if it has, we'll find out down the road. I think at this time, we need to look at option two. VVBA is welcome, and I encourage them to be part of that if we're gonna do the RFP. Let's get them involved, because they still may be the best organization to manage the bid. We don't know that till we put that out there. We've been doing this for years with one organization, let's put it out there and let's find out. Let others bid on it. And again, we may find out that VVBA is the best organization to manage this. But let's put it out to a competitive bid, because it is our tax dollars, the citizens of Vista, the businesses of Vista, their money. Thank you.
Councilmember Coles.
Thank you. When we look back nearly 20 years ago, when this was first, the Downtown Business District was established, business owners at that time wanted a, an opportunity to raise some money, to promote the downtown. And, and it was in its beginning stages, and they did a good job of working together cooperatively. And over the years, a lot of the original people left, went on, moved on. I'm not sure if there are any original members still on with the downtown business. But anyway, you're one of the originals. Thank you. And, but in the last three or four years, since I've been more involved with the inside operations of this, it has been filled with a lot of turmoil. There've been, there's been personal infighting, arguments, I've gone to a number of the meetings where I just wasn't quite sure, you know, what was being accomplished. And for two different years, we've been promised a turnaround. And, and the city has gone the extra mile to give a chance for a turnaround. I'm probably more encouraged this evening, because I think in just the last few weeks, there's been an insurgence of maybe some new blood into the organization, the VVBA. And I'm delighted to see some of our newer, younger entrepreneurs involved in the downtown growth becoming interested. And I, I think those people are looking for an avenue to use this resource to promote the downtown and to promote their business. And I, I'm hoping that they will allow us here at the city to find the best administrative support structure for them, to enhance the downtown business growth, opportunity, and promotion. And we've heard tonight some great promises, we've heard those in the past. I don't disbelieve any of it. I, Don, I really appreciate your coming forward. You're, you're new, you're successful, you have kind of a national face with some of your accomplishments, and I want to encourage you. I want you to be a face of the city, a face of our downtown and its future. But I, and I like Maureen's comment, I'd like option one and two. I don't know that we can cut the baby in half as a council, but I certainly think that, as I've looked and followed this through the last couple of weeks, that I would like to see, as Cliff, you promised, you want to show, you want to show proof and evidence of the turnaround and the success. And I think the way to do that is to become, I think you need to compete for this job. And, and you would have my full support if you can show, not you personally, but as a group, can show a resurgence of some of the skeptics who are a vital part of our downtown. They need to come back into the fold, so to speak. They need to be on board with the promotional direction that, that is, is the, the job of the VVBA, or whoever operates the administration of that bid money. And so I, I don't know how we proceed to do this, but I think Councilmember Aguilar's comment that, I'd like to go with option two, but see you as a strong competitive participant and applicant for that position with, with, you know, you've got a few months of a track record, as you've mentioned, to, to show us. And so that's where I am leaning right now. Thank you.
Councilmember Campbell.
Thank you. So this is one of the times that I think we have to look at the history of an organization. I like what I'm seeing in terms of the organizational change over the past couple of weeks. But when it comes down to dealing with essentially $100,000 of taxpayer money, we can't just say, "Well, let's continue down the path that we've tried year after year after year after year," and hope something changes next year. Because I think Mr. Fleming said it best, we've been here before, and we've said, "One more year, one more year." And what we've seen in that one more year is maybe a couple of months of, "We're gonna try really hard and change," some, definitely some turnover on the board in the past, but no significant positive improvement in the organizational structure. Now, we're here today to talk about the administration and in the management of the Central Vista Business Improvement District, and who's gonna handle that. But because that's been the VVBA for so many years, that's where they come in, their organizational performance comes into play in all of this. That being said, I think whoever the administrator of the bid money is, the VVBA has a role to play in the improvement of Vista's downtown. Just like the Chamber has a role to play in business throughout the entire city, the VVBA can play a role of business owners coming together to work to market and improve Vista's downtown. So whatever we do here, whether it's option one or option two, and with option two, we wind up going with an outside, whether it's another nonprofit or a contractor to administer the bid money, I want to see the VVBA succeed in the new direction they're going in. But as a council member, I have a fiduciary responsibility to ensure that the business owners of the bid are represented with where the money in that assessment is going. Is it being utilized in the best way possible? So it's very concerning for me to hear that three members of the VVBA are actually business owners in the Business Improvement District. To me, that's very counterintuitive. It's like having another organization come in and tell us how to run the city best, even though we're here locally. It doesn't make a lot of sense. Now, I do like what I'm seeing in terms of getting new board members in the VVBA and creating a more vibrant organization, and I think that's great. If the organization wasn't the administrator of the bid money, if they were an organization that was purely, an organization that's a business-run group like the Chamber, to where you can have business owners that have merely just an interest in wanting to see downtown improved, but having their business across town or in another town. So I'm strongly gonna support option two. In that, I want to see us open this process up to, whether it's another nonprofit or a contractor to administer, providing, perhaps they have more experience, perhaps they will lower the costs, and provide an opportunity for the city to renegotiate some of the fees and some of the matching grant money that we pay into this. So it comes down to this. The contract for administering the bid doesn't make the VVBA. If the VVBA turns the organization around, the new leadership that's come in, and demonstrates in the future, over a course of a longer period of time than a couple of weeks, that they're capable, that it's sustainable, and that it's effective in representing the downtown businesses, I have no problem with them in the future continuing the role that they currently do. So let's open it up. Let's see what the best option is for administering the bid. But for me, right now, the limited representation on the board of business owners within the bid is challenging, to say the least. But I think we've come to that breaking point of, it's been enough, let's see if we can give them one more year. I think this is the year where we've said, "We have to look at past performance." And year over year, those benchmarks haven't been met, we need to look at other options.
Councilmember Rigby, yes. Are you on?
I am, thank you. At this time, I would like to go ahead and move that we receive the report from the Central Vista Business Improvement District, and that for direction to staff, I would move that we go with option number two, continuing with the CVBID advisory board, providing oversight of the CVBID in contract with a different nonprofit or contractor for implementation of the CVBID. That would be my motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, and I, I haven't said anything too much, but, because I, I believe in the mission of the downtown organization, and I, I've always have. I know the Chamber focuses largely on the, on the Business Park and the whole entire city, and I just think we need somebody to really focus on downtown and the events and things downtown. And I think they've done a good job on that so far, but I, I do understand they're having problems, but I know that they have until June the 30th. And so I don't know, if we went out for an RFP, how soon will we have to do that?
Well, if we receive direction tonight--
Well, if we received direction tonight to go to option two, we would look at implementing an RFP within the next month.
Which would make it really hard for them to make a difference, for the VVBA to come back and...
As was suggested, though, they would have the ability to submit to the RFP, and the decision process would be somewhere between eight and 12 weeks out from today.
Oh, okay, so you'd put it out there, and then they'd have eight to 12 weeks before they have to come back with all the information?
We'd put out the RFP, we'd have a deadline for the responses, we'd evaluate the responses, we'd interview the top firms, or entities, I should say, and then we'd make a recommendation to the city council.
Okay. Okay. I mean, it's been a different organization recently, and so, not recently, the last couple of years, and they've kind of had, you know, their issues, and so I guess I pretty much agree with our council members, although I don't want to. And I, because I think our downtown is, I'm so proud of our downtown, and finally, I mean, I started working on the downtown in 1981, so, and it just, we had a few recessions and things went on, and so when I look, you know, I was down there this weekend, and when I see all the people down there, I mean, it's amazing, and I'm just so proud of it. So finally, finally, we have, you know, action going on down there. But, and I don't want to see the rod run go away, and I don't want to see, you know, the Taste of Vista, I don't want to see those events go away. I think those events bring, they bring people into our downtown, and Strawberry Festival, I know the Chamber's going to do that, but, so I don't want to let, I don't want to let those things go for our downtown. So it's very hard, but I get, I mean, I'd like option one and two is my thing, too, so, but I guess option two is what's on the table, so it looks like that's where we're going. Anybody else have anything?
I just want to say one thing.
Oh, okay.
Sorry. You said something that I forgot to address when I was speaking, and, you know, our downtown is growing, and it's very vibrant now. I actually heard this last weekend that people are coming from other cities because their cities don't have this kind of stuff to offer. I was just like floored that people from San Marcos and even Carlsbad come to our downtown. So I think we've still got a long ways to go, and, you know, we do have a plan to continue to grow that. But I also feel that it's our business owners that have really built our downtown, and some of our property owners that we have down there. And I think right now, I mean, some of the events that the VVBA has put on helped bring awareness to our downtown, but let's not forget that it's the businesses of our downtown that have turned it around and made our city vibrant. So I just want to put that out there.
Yeah. Councilmember Coles?
I want to echo those comments about what really is a new vibrancy to the downtown. When I bring friends that haven't normally come to downtown, they've become excited about what they see and the things that they're doing. And my family from out of town have been down there, and they're just amazed at a change in what they see in downtown Vista. And I think my challenge I would put out to the VVBA is enlist and encourage a resurgence of the new entrepreneurial spirit of some of the business owners who are there to get on board, because I think they can at least prove to me that VVBA may have the structural stability to move forward. And some of the stable business owners from that, that used to be so highly involved, you know, help me see their support as well.
And I, before, but I have one more question. So when we're talking about the fund, the funding, you know, you have, the matching funds were like, is it like $30,000 is our part of the matching funds, and $10,000 is for facade improvements, which is also part of that, but it's for facade improvements for the merchants, is that?
We provide them a $40,000 grant, $10,000 of which can be used for facade improvement up to, so they could use half of that or all $10,000 of it. In the last couple of years, they have not used the full $10,000 for the facade improvement, and more of that has gone to their budget.
Okay, so it's 40, but it's 40 from the city, and then the other, you're talking about 100, is it 80 or is it 100?
Yeah, it's $62,000 in bid fees, so between the two, it's about $102,000 that comes through the city to the VVBA.
Okay, so the $60,000 of it is from the bid members to, and actually, that's, and all of that is actually to make the downtown better, whether it's, you know, whether it's streetscapes or things like that, like they, I think they bought, you know, the lights downtown and things like that, I think, you know, they make a huge difference in the downtown. I think the lights make a huge difference down there, and the outbacks down there, when you drive down there, I'm glad they didn't take them down yet. And I hope that they keep them up, because I saw, you know, if they slip down the tree and they don't look quite so nice, then it kind of gives a bad look, so I'm hoping that they keep up all of that, so.
Madam Mayor, with regard to the budget, you brought up a good point. About $100,000 is kind of an amount that they can depend on as a base budget to do their operations. But in addition to that, they can expand that budget through fundraising activities, the rod run, all the things that have gone on. And about how much typically is their budget enhanced by those fundraising or event activities that take place?
At the beginning of the last year, they had a budget that was about $210,000, $215,000. So only $100,000 of that came from the city, and the rest was from other activities, which were grants from the county, or fundraising, or monies that came from their special events.
So they, the sky's the limit of how much they could generate by enhancing and drawing people into events and so forth? Okay?
And I guess I'm being a little sensitive, because I keep saying, you know, the $100,000, but actually, $62,000 is from the merchants, that's the merchants' money that they're putting toward the VVBA. So, you know, I get a little sensitive when I say the city, it's the city's money, because some of it actually is coming from the merchants out there. So anyway, I guess if there's nothing else we, oh, Amanda, are you still on there? No? Okay. There's nothing else to say, I guess, I guess I have to vote, we have to all vote. I don't want to vote. So I guess cast your votes, or did you already do it?
I did.
Oh, okay. Everyone, please cast your votes.
I can't.
What's the matter?
I think my button's light.
Oh, you've already done it except for me?
Yes.
Oh, I don't want to. Okay, I'll support my council members, okay. But I'm hoping the VVBA, I want you guys to apply for that, so get it together and please do that.
And I wanted to reiterate that as well, to Cliff, and Julie, and to Steve, and the other VVBA members here, don't be discouraged, but we're just going to make you work a little bit harder. So we have faith in you, but prove us right in the bid for it. Don't be discouraged.
Okay. Moving on. The next thing is the Central Business Improvement District notice intent to levy the D3.
Mayor, do you wish to have a report on this?
Report on this? This is a notice to levy the fees for the BID. No, we have no speaker.
No.
No speakers.
Can I make a motion to approve that item? Is that all it takes?
I'll second it. Any discussion? We have a motion, a second. Okay, cast your votes, please. Okay, that passes unanimously. So moving on, we're to our public hearings, our next thing as a public hearing on our agenda, it's the appeal of the special use permit for 7-Eleven at 902 South Santa Fe, public hearing number one, and I will open the public hearing. And John Conley is going to give a report.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a request for a special use permit for a Type 20 ABC license, which is for off-site sale of beer and wine at 902 South Santa Fe Avenue, which is the 7-Eleven. This is an appeal of the Planning Commission's decision on the project from last month. The project location is at the northeast corner of South Santa Fe and Civic Center Drive. It's a two-story commercial structure that was recently remodeled and opened by 7-Eleven, surrounded by commercial businesses on all sides, with residential approximately 500 feet away to the northeast, as shown in the aerial photo. The site is located within the downtown specific plan, planning area four, it's got a mixed-use designation, but it requires a special use permit for the sale of alcohol, which is why 7-Eleven had to apply for a special use permit to go through this process. This is a floor plan for the existing facility, it shows the coolers along the rear wall of the facility, the coolers in the corner that are circled would be where beer and wine is stocked within the store. These are photographs of the facilities I mentioned, it was recently remodeled and opened. There is a 7-Eleven on the ground floor, which is about 2,400 square feet, and a small office upstairs of about 500 square feet. The rest of the space upstairs is unconditioned. Staff recommended denial of the special use permit to the Planning Commission, we have not changed our recommendation for the city council's consideration for the reasons that are stated. The site's located within Census Track 19602, which allows three off-sale licenses for the ABC standards. There are currently three active licenses within the tract, and so this proposed off-sale license would create over-concentration within the Census Tract. There are also two additional off-sale licenses in the immediate vicinity of the site, which are located in adjacent Census Tracts. So in total, there's five existing off-sale licenses within a short distance of the project site, approximately 2,000 feet, which is less than a half mile. This is a map showing the project site in red, which is at the corner of Santa Fe and Civic Center, as well as all the existing off-sale licenses that are in the vicinity of the site. The three located on the right side, or I guess the east side of the facility, which are Vons at 940 South Santa Fe, La Vista Liquor at 993 South Santa Fe, and Rancho Vista Market at 988 Civic Center Drive, are all within this Census Tract, so those are the three existing off-sale licenses. There's also CVS, which is catty-corner to the site, at 883 South Santa Fe, and Walgreens across the street from the site on Civic Center at 802 South Santa Fe, those are in different Census Tracts, but again, in close proximity to this location. All of the, and then, I'm sorry, Slick's Liquors located about a half mile north of the site. All of the existing licenses that are shown are full liquor licenses, with the exception of Walgreens, which is also limited to just beer and wine. This is a map of the Census Tract area, the project site's in 19602, which is in the center of the screen. It's located at the very edge of the Census Tract, as I noted, so there are other facilities across the street that are in a different tract. 19601 and 19602 make up, for the most part, the Sheriff's Beat area. That's also a consideration reviewing these applications. This is a map showing the crime statistics for the Sheriff's Beats within the city. This site is within Sheriff's Beat 307, which is northeast of the intersection of Civic Center and South Santa Fe. When we presented this project to the Planning Commission, the stats within Sheriff's Beat 307 were from 2012, because we hadn't received an updated map, they were at 98.6% of the citywide average. But since the January hearing and this hearing, we've received new information from the sheriffs at 2013 statistics, which show an increase in crime in that Sheriff's Beat up to 115.2%. However, the city staff does not typically consider crime statistics to be a major consideration in the review of these applications unless it's over 120% of the citywide average, so we still don't consider crime statistics to be a primary consideration in this application. As I noted, the Planning Commission reviewed the application on January 28th of this year. They recommend, they denied the application 4-2 with one commissioner absent, and the applicant since appealed the application to the council, which is why the application is before you this evening. And with that, staff is continuing to recommend denial of the special use permit, and I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Okay, I have several speakers, do you want, everybody want to hear speakers? Okay. Okay, the first speakers are Cadence Capital, I have Brian Duke, followed by Rob Berry.
Thank you very much, counsel, for everyone and everyone else being here, really appreciate the time, not only this evening, but the previous course of six months or so, I got the opportunity to speak to a few of the council members. I'm Brian Duke, I'm here on behalf of Kate's Development, as well as one of our very good clients, 7-Eleven, to request the off-sale of beer and wine. Real quick, a couple of building highlights that we're particularly proud of. The prior building there up on the top photo was dated, a little bit cluttered appearance, some deferred maintenance issues, didn't conform to parking signage, ADA requirements, handful of vacancies, varying management-type styles, so ended up being not as well-run as obviously the current building, which is brand-new facade, new site improvements, landscape, security and lighting, a single experienced operator, which he'll speak here very shortly, but a tremendous amount of pride of ownership, as well as a strong corporate backing. So I encourage everyone to stop in if you haven't already. This number will obviously be updated a little bit, because it sounds like it's an old number, but, you know, the project is not in a high-crime area, falling below that 120% threshold. And since the new franchisee has been operating out of that location, no crimes have been reported. That's approximately six months, September. Some of the reports that were previously referenced were a little bit dated, and lumped us, I guess, in, or lumped this request in with some adjacent liquor stores, the ones being across the street, which do have a much, much larger selection of beer, wine, one of them being liquor, and then as you expand that radius, you actually get into just, to liquor stores. So we are, we're proposing the absolute minimum, just Type 20 for a small selection of beer and wine only. As I mentioned, the stores next door, you know, we've been discussing 20, 25, or 30 square feet, approximately two coolers' worth of an area where you'd actually sell that type of product, anywhere from 20 to 40 times less than some of the other locations. It's forecasted that the sale of beer and wine would account for less than 10% of the total floor area, and projected to account for less than 14% overall sales, yet can directly generate an additional 30 to 40% of incidental sales, customers coming in for other items to bring home along with them, snacks, other beverages, household items, things like that. Without these incidental sales, the economic viability of the store is in jeopardy. The franchisee, who again will speak here, he's physically present, he's there on a daily basis, anytime customers come in, he's the first one to greet you, and he's a wonderful gentleman, so he's constantly there, he's involved. And again, I think I highlighted a little bit of some of the upgrades that we've done. Hopefully, that transitions into the rest of the center as a whole, which it's a couple new tenants already in there since the 7-Eleven has been open. Some of the standard conditions that we've discussed over the course of months, no wine sold with alcohol content greater than 15%, no exterior advertising, strict policy on loitering, which has definitely improved, all beverages regardless container size only sold in their pre-manufactured sizes, providing enhanced security, which again, I believe the franchisees actually already assisted the local police department with some footage from a crime that occurred in the area, height markers on all doors, robbery prevention, a very detailed training program, graffiti removal. So we're willing to, we're eager to continue these discussions and really dive into these conditions for the sale of beer and wine. Again, the operator supports the city of Vista, he'll get into more detail about that, Responsible Beverage Sales and Service Ordinance, and we've also, we are more than willing to be open to continued conditions to make the store as safe and as much of an asset to the city as possible. With that said, there are a few other representatives from 7-Eleven, as well as Cadence here, that can, in addition to myself, can answer questions.
So are you waiting for next speaker, Rob Berry?
If that's okay to...
I have Rob Berry, is that the next speaker, Rob Berry?
I believe Amelia with 7-Eleven is going to speak. If that's all right.
Oh, okay.
Is that okay?
Okay, that's okay.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Amelia, I'm a field consultant with 7-Eleven, and one of the things that I get to do is I get to visit my stores, and I try to help them grow the business. So this is why I'm here, to speak on behalf of Happy today, to help him try to grow the business. I really want to just petition you guys to ask for assistance in making it more, making it more fair for Happy to be successful in his sales. Our store is very different and kind of unique to the competition around us. We're not a big supermarket, and we're not a liquor store. And the people that come into our stores basically are there for convenience. So if you think about it, the time it takes for you to park your car at a Vons and walk into the front door, you would already be in the middle of our store and probably already have a product in your hand. And Happy's sales have been struggling in the last six months compared to my other stores in the same city of Vista. And my fear for him is that with no beer and wine, a lot of our guests that have already come into our stores may not return because it's not convenient for them. So I think most people already assume that most 7-Elevens have beer and wine. So when they come into our store and see that it's not available, they may not come back because now they have to go to two different locations to get the product that they want. They'll come in and maybe get a bag of chips and so on and so forth. But for me, you know, when I shop, I want it to be convenient. After a long day of work, I just want to, you know, if I wanted to get a glass of wine or something, I could just make a one-stop-shop. I go in, get some wine, even if I need to get milk, and I get a loaf of bread, I can just do it within minutes versus, you know, 10 minutes to walk the store and up and down the aisles and so on and so forth. But I just want to, I guess the next thing is just talking about the proposed floor plan of what we have. I don't, we're not asking for a lot. We just basically want a few stores on the very corner of the store, B.C. He's very involved with the community, he's a very hard worker, and you know, he is very well-loved already by a lot of the community. And you'll see, if you have time to hear from them, a lot of them are here to speak on his behalf. I hope you guys get a chance to just visit him and just see what he does. He runs a great operation, it's a clean store, and he's just a very, very hard worker, very responsible, and is just trying to make a living for him and his family. So with that, I think I'll go ahead and introduce Happy to you, so that he can go ahead and introduce himself.
My name is Harperet Singh. I usually go by Happy. I just have that name since my childhood, you know. I came to this country, I mean, to the United States about 17 years ago with a dream of, you know, becoming successful, owning our own business and all that, because I used to hear that when I was there, you know, all the time, that, you know, this is a land of opportunity. And my dad came here prior to that, then we all, the whole family came. And since 97, I tell you that's the year when I came to this country, we've been working hard, the whole family, my dad. As we are speaking right now, he's working, my dad is working at the store because I can't afford any, too much payroll, that I can hire any other people at this point. My whole family is here, my wife, my 10-year, 10-month-old son is also here. I mean, I've been working hard, and I've been owning, I owned 7-Eleven for the last seven years in Salt Lake City, Utah. But I just decided to come back to California because I always thought that California is a place where you can be more successful, because that's where I lived 10 years prior to moving to Salt Lake City, Utah. And I sold a couple of 7-Eleven stores I had, you know, in Salt Lake, and I invested all that money in this location in Vista with the, you know, hope that one day, you know, I'll be, you know, successful and will even grow more. But at this point, without beer and wine, successful is not the right word to say. I would say it's very, you know, I should, I need to survive at this location, you know, with the sales we're having right now. Success is kind of, you know, will be later, you know, if I get any, you know, beer and wine at that location. Because that's very important for a convenience store, you know, to have all the sales possible in every single, you know, category, you know. And like we already said before, we don't, you know, we don't promote alcohol or tobacco, no. I mean, that's just assortment, you know, that's, we just, you know, it just brings the additional sales to the store. And I just, like I said earlier, I came with a bigger dream, you know, bigger dreams of this country. And I worked hard, my whole family worked hard. I went to school, got my bachelor's from UC Riverside. And I mean, we are totally apart from any problems, we're just working hard kind of family, you know, and trying to run a small business at this point, you know. So whatever decision you guys will make tonight, if it goes against me, I mean, you guys will go home, fine, 7-Eleven will open maybe another location, they'll be fine, it's a big company. Other people go home, the person who will suffer will be me. I mean, I already have like two houses that I'm making mortgages to, and you're looking at maybe a couple of foreclosures, you know, or, you know, business down, you know, I mean, after if I get, you know, if I don't get any vote from you guys. So I really need, you know, I really need the vote from everybody tonight, and I'm a very responsible, responsible businessman who would do everything to serve the community and to be responsible at that particular site, you know. And that's pretty much I can say, you know, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Thank you, Happy. So, Rob Berry, are you still wanting to talk? You're the next card that I have, the next speaker.
Thank you. As our closer, I appreciate your time as well, just to make this brief. I've been part of the Cadence team and worked on initial construction, redevelopment of the site. And so we're very lucky to have an operator like Happy running the store, and we also sympathize with him, and we're trying to work with him and the city to do anything we can to make sure this is a safe operation as it stands now. Anything else we can do to continue to be a successful business, improve the safety. I think already in the last six months, you've seen improvements in the area, obviously the physical things, but it seems like there's been more tendencies in the area. We knew this was kind of a starter for this corner, and we're hoping it is starting to blossom, and we hope that the city would like to see that to continue. With that being said, as far as the SUP and all the legal part of this thing is, really we hope you allow this current responsible franchisee to remain in business, create jobs for the city, and then generate some tax revenue, and really anchor this corner and keep it continuing in operation. Again, we're looking at a one-stop neighborhood market for the surrounding community, and I think you'll hear some significant support tonight from the community so far for our requests and for the store itself to date. Happy didn't mention this, but he's also very active in the local businesses and would like to support the breweries. Again, this isn't really about beer, it's about business, but he is involved in that. We'd like to see him continue to be a pride of ownership in this area. And he has some other speakers. He's been sponsored tonight. We just ask for a fair consideration of this. And again, I think we're asking for a, it's kind of corny, but a little itty-bitty SUP is 25 square feet for this store, and we're happy to accept whatever conditions make that clear, that we're not asking to be CVS, not asking to be a liquor store, anything where near Vons. We're talking about 25 square feet, maybe this first row of chairs here for this gentleman to survive and continue to operate his store. So appreciate your time, consideration, and just ask the right to respond to any questions you have later from our team or other people in the audience. Thank you.
Okay, I have the further speakers here. I have Renee Glatsbaugh, followed by John Byram.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, and city council members and staff. Our Vista beautiful brochure needs to be safe forever. Those are the concerns of the Vista taxpayers who signed the petition and submitted concern letters to you to deny type 20 ABC license at the existing 7-Eleven store at 702 Civic Center Drive. Did so for their safety and the safety of others, as safety comes first in homes, pedestrians, schools, and for motorists, cyclists, safe shopping, safe freeway from DUIs and wrongway drivers and beyond, and pedestrians. Also, one letter regarding existing 7-Eleven convenience store at 902 South Santa Fe Avenue. Please deny the special use permit for a type 20 ABC license at an existing 7-Eleven convenience store. I have experienced too many drug and alcohol people in South Santa Fe and no longer shop at Vons. I try not to go to CVS as I was hit up by a drug person at CVS on 883 South Santa Fe Avenue Vista. I only use the drive-through at CVS. I did not, I did notify the manager. I have been here for 30 years, this is the worst error. Only drug, alcohol, and recovery programs on South Santa Fe Avenue and Civic Center Drive. Vista. A concerned phone conversation, 22414, with cyclist Chris Muse, storekeeper of Alpha Bicycle and Company. At 1215 South Santa Fe says a no vote on type 20 ABC license at existing 7-Eleven convenience store, 902 South Santa Fe Avenue. Vista, safety for everyone is needed. A concerned phone conversation, 22414, with Maestro Dial de Wad at Music Exchange, 985 Civic Center Drive. Vista says a no vote on type 20 ABC license at existing 7-Eleven convenience store at 902 South Santa Fe Avenue Vista is needed for the safety of all. There is a step-by-step Christian preschool and infant center at 755 Civic Center Drive in Vista. The existing ABC licenses are Vons at 940 South Santa Fe Avenue Vista, CBS at 883 South Santa Fe Avenue Vista, Walgreens at 802 South Santa Fe Avenue, La Vista Liquor and Deli at 993 South Santa Fe Avenue, South Santa Fe Avenue and Vista. Please, health, safety, and welfare and education, keep our Vista safe. Thank you.
Thank you. John Byram, followed by Harperet Singh. Is that Happy? Oh, okay, okay.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name's John Byram, and I'm a prevention specialist at North Coastal Prevention Coalition and Vista Community Clinic. Erica Leary, our program manager, would have liked to be here tonight, this evening, but she had a prior commitment at Madison Middle School, PTA, meaning sharing Mads Power of Parents, A Guide to Prevent Underage Drinking. We recognize that all sectors of the community play an important role in prevention of underage drinking. That's one reason we are so impressed with the comprehensive staff report regarding this application by 7-Eleven to sell beer and wine at 902 South Santa Fe Avenue. The staff report takes into account a growing body of research, concludes that increased alcohol outlet density contributes to negative community impacts, including excessive alcohol consumption, crime, and violence. A recent study in California concluded that having a great number of alcohol outlets increases youth access to alcohol. Staff's conclusion is not a criticism of any particular business operation, but an acknowledgement that increasing alcohol availability impacts the entire community, an important example of how elected officials can take and prevent underage drinking. Alcohol remains the most abused drug by young people and is associated with the leading cause of death in teens and young adults, motor vehicle crashes, homicides, and suicides. Denying the applicant's appeal is recommended by staff also supports Vista's general plan, specifically Healthy Vista Policy 1.11, strive to reduce the problems associated with alcohol and drug abuse when developing or altering program policies and practices. Healthy Vista Element is a new section of the general plan and was included in part because there is a new urgency to involve all levels of government in promoting improved public health. The Healthy Vista Element demonstrates the city's awareness of the role of local government and can have in improving public health and promoting healthier residents by taking leadership in a role of making the community health, community health and wellness a priority. Thank you for this consideration in this important manner, and I have submitted a letter from North Coastal Prevention Coalition.
Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Brett Schonzenbach, followed by Mike Bergman.
Good evening, Mayor and city council members. My name is Brett Schonzenbach. I'm the CEO of the Vista Chamber of Commerce, and I'm here to represent the view of the Board of the Directors. They would encourage you to consider and accept this application for the special use permit from 7-Eleven. And as you've heard, you've heard a lot of different aspects of it already tonight. I don't want to reiterate all of them, but they're willing to listen to any conditions that you would place upon them and willing to enact all those conditions. We're talking about a very small section, but the incidentals are a very big deal for him. If you look at all the other 7-Elevens in town, most of them have gas stations, which drive traffic, which then result in incidental sales. All of them are able to sell alcohol, beer, wine, things like that, to drive sales. Yes, he knew going into this location that that wasn't, neither of those were possible, and so he's gone it the best he could for the several months, and it's not working. So now he's here back saying, "I would like to make this work, I'd like to make this successful, but I need a little help from you." I heard the planning commission, I was there, I heard the planning commissioners talk, and some of them said, "Well, he knew what he was getting into, and so, too bad." Well, I can understand that argument, there's some validity to it, and I do think, though, for honest, the city knew what they were getting into, too, to bring in a 7-Eleven with no beer and wine might have been a slight bit naive to think that it would go, especially, you all know, that's a tough location to get in and out of, just because of the challenges right there on that corner. So he needs to be able to have the best chance to succeed possible, and that's what we would urge for you. Many of you are like me, I've been in Vista over 40 years. That corner has never looked this good in 40 years that I've been here. It's been blighted and ugly a lot of the time that I've lived here, and so the improvements that they made are excellent. I would love to see him have a great chance of surviving and thriving on that corner and make it a stable business there, rather than him go under and then we're right back to some blight on that corner. So the chamber would encourage you to consider, strongly consider and approve his application for a special use permit. Thank you.
Thank you, Brett. Mike Bergman, followed by Ashani Pandita. Can I say that okay?
Madam Mayor, City Council? Thanks for letting me talk tonight, guys. I wrote something down. I'm Mike Bergman, and I'm your neighborhood Cox technician. I've been living here on Postaway for the better part of a year now, and I'm here to support Happy and his employees. I've been a customer of his since he opened his store last year. When I go in, I'm greeted by name and a warm welcome. He always seems to have an overstock of the products I purchase, and I really don't think it's a coincidence. He cares, he just, he really cares, you know? And I feel it'd be a terrible decision to deny his business a fair shot to flourish in a community built on hard work and opportunity. He's a man of strong character, and his absence would hurt the neighborhood a lot more than a fridge with some beer inside. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Ashani, followed by Richard Eckner.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. My name is Ashani Pandita, and I would like to say a few words regarding Happy and what he has done for me so far. A couple weeks ago, Mr. Happy contributed a big amount towards my sponsorship for Misteen San Diego as a very kind and generous donation on his behalf, so I could participate in this amazing opportunity. I am so grateful for him, for such a big favor for giving me that he, sorry, I am so grateful for him for doing such a big favor for me, given that he himself is a new and struggling business owner. It definitely goes to show that he does give back to his community, and I think as a local business owner, that is vital for success. Although I do not know him personally, I can tell you that he is a great man with such a kind heart. His contribution, help, and help has brought me a long way, and I couldn't thank him enough for it. I want to end by saying that he's a very genuine person with such a big heart, and I hope you kindly consider his request to help progress his business. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Richard Eckner.
Good evening, Mayor Redder and fellow council people. My name is Richard Eckner. I operate a business just up the road on 640, and I live in Vista also. We're business neighbors, I guess, about a half a mile away, or a block away, and I see Happy quite often. He's got a good heart, he's an honest man, he's good- He's a good man. That's about the only thing I can say positive about people that I sense from them. Happy's been struggling. He's got everything into this place. And one gentleman said earlier, yes, Happy knows everybody by name, goes out of his way to be kind. He's got heart and he's got soul, but he hasn't got a liquor license. And I know that area very well, and over saturation, I believe was the term. Yeah, there's a lot of places you can buy beer, but one lady also said, "You can whip in there and pick up your beer. You can pick up what else and get out in 30 seconds." I'm not here to do anything but to support Happy. I understand there are rules in every business, and every business has to account to the rules of the city, the state, whatever. And I started the business here about six years ago, and wow, nothing but trouble. And the city of Vista worked with me, and I overcame it twice, I think. We were within 30 days of giving letters out to our disabled clients that we weren't going to be there anymore. And this gentleman here, Mr. Conley, he helped us a great deal, so for once, I'd like to acknowledge that. Another one is Robbie Bush. She was awesome. She gave me the power to go in there and keep fighting. I respect what Happy's doing, and I respect that he's a working man, and I respect that he's being a businessman like me. And it's been a rough road, but the city of Vista has been really good to me. The staff at city planning worked with me. There was a couple I wasn't too crazy about, but for the most part, yes, it's a good, it's a really good outfit. And all I can do is say, yes, we can, we can probably walk up here and read a letter and pick out the high-crime statistics that supposedly come with this sale of alcohol and whatever. I do not drink. I'm recovering, and I'm happy, but I'm not here for promoting his alcohol. I'm promoting him as a supporter, as a friend, as a good man, and if he can provide for his family. I know his father, Mr. Singh, wonderful man.
I need you to wrap up.
Okay, and that's about all I've got to say. I'm unfamiliar with this, just hit the trap. Hit the trap door.
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, that is all of our speakers tonight. So, start with Councilmember Rigby. Councilwoman Rigby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to say thank you to everyone who has come to speak on either side of the issue. I thank you for your participation in the community and voicing your opinions, because that's what being a city and a community is all about, is getting our voices together and having an honest and open discussion, and I appreciate you very, very much. I also want to say thank you to Mr. Conley for your work and dedication on this project. I have a couple of questions, and I'm going to direct this. I'm sorry, I didn't write down last names, but Amelia, I wanted to know, as the field rapport, also for the gentleman that works with 7-Eleven, what, on the average, is the percentage of sales in a 7-Eleven that is alcohol? Do you have that number?
On average, alcohol sales for my store is about 14 percent. So it's not like a huge amount. Most of the stuff, like I said, it is incremental sales. They'll buy other things with it. We call it a market basket, meaning it will drive other sales. They might come in for beer, but they'll get snacks, or they'll get a hot dog, or they'll get other things to go with.
Okay, okay. Thank you. The other question I have, I think, is for Mr. Conley, or perhaps Captain Rhodey, I'm not sure, but we'll start with Mr. Conley. There have been some discussions on crime in the area, and I don't know how related to the opening of, you know, the Walgreens when they opened and started selling alcohol, and then CVS opened and started selling alcohol. But in the event that with the, if this passes and they are granted a license for selling alcohol, in the event that something strange happens in the universe and the stars align and crime just absolutely escalates because of it, can we revisit this and change our mind? I mean, is that, is that an option? Maybe, I don't know if that's for Mr. Stone. I don't know who answers that question.
This is a discretionary application for a special use permit. A special use permit comes with conditions, and it's a living permit. The city at any time, for any reason, with respect to impacts to health and safety, can re-review the permit, and it can be rescinded in conditions where we can show that there's a significant impact. So it is reviewable, yes.
Okay, thank you. And then Captain Rhodey, I did have one question on the crime statistics that we were looking at, and I think it was for the CVS location, and going down through the years for incidents, and it was 2012, there were 44 incidents.
Yes.
And 2013, it was back down to 29 incidents for the year.
Correct.
That's a huge drop in incidents, and kudos to you and your department, but do we know why there was a significant drop?
Could be any number of factors. I wouldn't be able to tell you that right now.
Okay, okay. Well, that's fair. Thank you. That was my only question on that. I understand that Happy, when you came in, that it was understood there wouldn't be a liquor license, and I understand that you have struggled over the last few months with that. And I have had other people call me, or not too many, to be quite honest, but wanting to know why you didn't sell alcohol, because they went there specifically for that and didn't get it. So I've had, I've had that conversation. I would, I'm probably in favor of granting the special use permit with a couple of conditions, and I wanted to go back to one of the slides that you had up, that Brian had shown, and it was the standards, conditions of SUP approval, and the very last one was 24/7 hours of operation, and I understand your store is open. Are you asking to be selling alcohol for 24 hours a day?
No, 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 no. Actually, I think we're asking from 8:00 AM till midnight only. Usually, other stores, they do till 2:00 AM, but, you know, midnight is fine, you know, for us, because that's pretty much, you know, when people usually buy stuff, you know, after work, or, you know, after 10 o'clock sometimes.
Okay.
So we just ask until midnight, if possible, you know?
Okay. And then I guess the only other comment that I have is that I would like to see a business in Vista succeed.
Yes, please.
And to provide, provide the community, to provide jobs, to provide, naturally, as City Council, we like the tax money.
Well, that's where the goal is. Actually, for the last seven years, I had, when I had two stores, I had at least eight to 10 employees working for me, you know, because I was, I mean, I was at the store, but I wasn't working at the counter, you know, not as a cashier. But now I'm doing that, you know, as a cashier, you know, doing everything. So my goal is to, you know, work in the back, not on the front, you know?
Right.
So I can hire more cashiers and get more jobs for the, you know, community, you know?
I would want to see certain conditions on the special use permit, meaning the beer and alcohol, I mean, I'm sorry, beer and wine, and I like the idea of using, I'd like to see your 25 square foot all filled with Vista beer and wine, because we do have some nice Vista beers and wine.
Yes.
But definitely just the beer and wine, and the, not to expand the area that you have requested for already.
Yes.
And the locks, and et cetera, et cetera, that you have on here for your, for your conditions.
Yes.
So I would see that with, with conditions.
Yes.
And limited hours of selling alcohol, not 24 hours a day.
Yes.
But with that, I would, I would probably say yes to a special use permit.
Could I add one, something, because I also, you know, really like when people talk against, you know? I really want to make sure they also, you know, go in favor of me, you know, because I like to join everybody and, you know, get everybody's yes, you know? This is, this makes me, you know, feel better, you know? I mean, we, we don't sell to any intoxicated people, you know, or anybody underage, you know, because we, we have a program, like, you know, the training programs we do give to our employees before they stand and sell alcohol. I mean, we scan their, the customer's ID, if they're under 30, you know, or they look young, we scan their ID. So when, by scanning, it can catch even the IDs expired or anything, it would catch all that. So, I mean, we have control on that. I mean, we want to sell to any underage, or we want to promote, you know, alcohol.
And I thank you for that, and I know when we were, when you were meeting with us.
Yes.
And I met with Mr. Duke, twice, I believe we met, because I did have concerns and questions, and he was able to come back and meet with me a second time, as you, you came in and met with me again. So I do appreciate that, and I understand the training and the things that you do with your, your employees, and that was one of the questions I had asked you previously.
I know so.
So thank you for that. So I'll turn it over to any other of my colleagues that have questions.
Councilwoman Campbell.
Thank you. A quick question for Mr. Stone regarding this process, or maybe Mr. Conley. If the council were to approve the special use permit, this is a finding of fact in this process, is that correct? In terms of the council would have to say that the proposed use at the particular location is necessary or desirable? It's reasonably compatible with those permitted in the surrounding areas? And the proposed use under the circumstances of the particular case, it's not detrimental to the health, safety, and welfare of the vicinity? Is that correct?
Those would be the conclusions reached by the council, and then the record would need to include facts, and so the resolution supporting the conclusions would identify the facts that lend support to that conclusion reached by the council.
So I, so I guess my point for asking that question, the reason I bring that up is this. I don't think that staff's recommendation for denial of this appeal or denial of the special use permit is based on any of the information presented in terms of how good of a business owner, Happy, that you are, how difficult it is to run a business in the city, or difficult to run and make successful without alcohol. Those are not in the realm of the information that we, as a council, should be looking at, or supposed to look at in determining those conclusions. This is more of a, is this census tract over-concentrated? Is this necessary or desirable for the public necessity or convenience to have an additional alcohol outlet where there's, where there's already a saturation of alcohol outlets within the community? When you look at this census tract alone, we're at concentration. Adding an additional one would over-concentrate us. When you look at the availability of outlets within the proximity, that number goes up even higher. So personally, I have to look at this as what the facts are presented, crime statistics, this is not considered a high-crime beat, but seeing it go up from 98.6 to over 115 is not going in the right direction. Numerous studies after study, more recent ones than were even noted in staff's report, have shown additional increase in alcohol outlet availability, especially the convenience factor, increases crime related to alcohol. You know, I've attended seminars and presentations by experts in the field that have all said the increase in availability of alcohol outlets increases the crime related to alcohol, whether it's domestic violence, whether it's petty crime, that number goes up. Now, to address Councilwoman Rigby, I don't think you're going to see one outlet create an astronomical increase, but every step that's taken in that direction increases the crime in general. So I think that there's a couple of other issues in terms of the public convenience or necessity for alcohol availability. And I have an issue with, in particular, refrigerated beer and wine products that are at a location that you drive in, you get right back onto the road. And I don't know if the sheriffs could speak to this, but, you know, to me, that leads to a higher potential for DUI, a higher potential for other drinking and driving-related crimes. So I'm going to make a motion that we close the public hearing and deny the appeal of the special use permit for the 7-Eleven at 902 South Santa Fe Avenue, and adopt staff's recommendation in the denial of the SUP at this time.
Councilwoman Coles? Yeah, it's your turn to talk.
Yeah. I know that you've already heard, you've been lectured, you knew this going in, and it didn't work out. My concern is that wine and beer seem to be the magic bullet to make this business location survive. And I don't know why that's the only, only conclusion that is presented to us for, I mean, obviously, by the support you have, you're, you're an entrepreneurial businessman, you're, you attract people, you've got a good personality, you have a lot of personal characteristics that would attract people to continue doing business with you. My question, because I'm not inclined to oversaturate this area with the liquor license, but my question maybe is a bigger one, is there something else that could be an attraction for customers to come into that location? It seems there, there may be other ways to, it's in a prominent corner, there's potential for some kind of attraction to, to bring people in to do the kind of shopping that would then provide these, this other ancillary shopping or purchasing that, that takes place. I'm, I'm not, I support the planning, the Planning Commission, they do a lot of work. They do research, they do background, they look at a bigger picture than we even have a chance to do here in the lead-up to something like this coming to, to our, us for action. And, and I will be supporting the Planning Commission's recommendation, and staff's recommendation to deny, but in doing that, is, do you have some, 7-Eleven, what, what other things could, could be done to, to make this attractive and to make an alcoholic beverage the magic bullet that may not work? I mean, that, there may be other reasons that people aren't going there. I don't know that that is our solution, and I feel conflicted to be given that as kind of a do or die for your business.
Well, I'm sorry. Actually, I would like to say something. I wish, you know, I didn't have any beer and cigarette in my store, you know? If that's the case, I mean, like, if I had lots of, like, a customer count, I would be, like, happy to just sell food, snacks, non-alcoholic, you know, no problem with that. I mean, I just need the customer count for that, you know, in order to do that. In that case, I don't even need beer and wine or cigarettes, because they are the low-margin items anyway for us, you know? It just, it just brings people in. I mean, like, we already said that. And by saying that, I would say, prior to owning my first 7-Eleven in Salt Lake, in 2005, I, I mean, I managed a store in Long Beach, California, which was, which was very close to Jordan High School. And, I mean, at that location, it's still dry. It's a dry location, because they just had that, that you cannot have beer and wine. And that situation is doing perfect without beer and wine, because they have those kids, they come buy food, you know, non-alcoholics and everything. So I wish I had a couple of high schools close to me, then I would not here be standing today asking for beer and wine. I mean, believe me, it's just the customer count that we need in order to, you know, make sales at the store. So, I mean, we are not, like, it's not like we just love beer and wine, that's where we're asking. We just want to sell other stuff, you know, along with that, you know? So like I said, I wish I had more, you know, younger generation, like, younger kids or more people around my store buying other things, you know? When we promote food, you know, that's our goal right now, is 7-Eleven. We want to have at least by 20% of our sales, we just want to have it, like, food items only, you know? That's what our goal is, you know? Beer and wine is not, you know, something that...
The 7-Eleven rep, what, I mean, surely, you've got, you've got a big corporation, you've got a lot of, a lot of...
We have a lot of tools, yeah.
Is, is there some other attraction or some other? Is, is there some other, uh, attraction or some other, I, I'm, I can't support this as alcohol being the magic bullet for a store's success...
Right.
...that never had that as their original business plan.
Well, as his business consultant, what I do in my stores is I really look at the infrastructure and try to grow sales with what we have. And I've been working with Lucky very clo- unhappy with very closely, you know, I'm there every single week with him, and, you know, I walk the store. I want to make sure he's not out of stock of products, he has the right product assortment, he has a clean store, he's friendly, all the basic checklist to make a seven-eleven successful has been checked. He's running it perfectly the way he should, and what we're really lacking is customer accounts. And like I mentioned earlier, I'm just a little afraid that, you know, when he first opened, there were so many people that came into our store, but I'm afraid that the ones that came for the, unfortunately for beer and wine, aren't returning, because it is not convenient for them, it's not a one-stop shop. So, I mean, I had another seven-eleven in the Vista area that was a dry store as well, and it took eight years, and we petitioned the city to go ahead and grant them the license. They finally did get the license, and the franchisee was actually here, and they grew their sales just the first month by twelve percent. And for an operation like our store, that is huge and very significant. So it is a big chunk of our sales, I mean, we, we have all the statistics, it break down, the percentages, and, but he's running a great location, he's offering food, or offering coffee, everything he, he can do, he's doing, so, okay.
That being said, I, I stand by my personal convictions, and I, I will second the motion that's, that's on the table.
John, did you want to say anything? You're the only one left.
Let's say one more thing before, actually, I have a support of at least over two hundred people, they just come to my store, or, you know, petition that I get from them, signed petition from them, so if you want to take...
Sure.
Deputy Mayor Aguilera.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, uh, welcome to City Vista. You're a new business owner here, and we really appreciate the work you have put into that corner. It's a huge improvement, uh, to what was there before, so, um, you know, I congratulate you on that. I've been to your business, uh, it's very well-run, it's very clean, um, you know, I mean, it was spick and span, basically. My concern is the crime. I was actually surprised to hear that the crime rate was as low as it was, and not surprised, though, that it's increased, and not far from our one-twenty that, uh, we target, you know, for denial. And then, we already have an over-concentration, which is a concern of mine. Sale of alcohol is not a concern necessarily, it's really, you know, the issues that it creates. Um, and crime is obviously one of the things we look at. And I'll be honest with you, I go to some of the other, well, I have one seven-eleven by my house, and I either stop there to get gas when I'm, my suburban's about ready to run out of gas, or if I know somebody's coming over to my house that drinks Bud Light or Coors Light or something like that, I run in there and get a twelve-pack of beer, and that's the way it is, you know? I don't go in there to buy food, um, but that's just me personally. So I know that that's, that is a big part of your, your business, and it does draw customers, and my kids do go in there and buy Slurpees and what have you, so, um, I understand all that. And I know you weren't originally intending to sell, you know, I was really actually surprised this business went in there in the first place. Uh, I had, actually had to ask the city manager, what's going in there? It looks like something's going on there, and, and, uh, I'm not so sure initially, he even knew what was going, you know, I don't know that we recruited seven-eleven to come in there, I, I thought they were going down the street. Uh, that was the original intent, and, so I was very surprised that your store went in there. Having said that, that's a busy intersection, and I actually have had a couple people come up to me, and, and, one which was my mom, so, I mean, she does count, but, um, you know, it, it's hard to get in and out of there. And one of the things I know that had to be, I would think, considered by staff originally, and I know it's pointed out here in our staff report, but in the original application, was traffic, and how that intersection was going to be impacted. One of the things that's in our report, it talks about, uh, the inclusion of alcohol sales at this location, which to some degree increased trips to and from the location, thereby adding traffic to the intersection. So that's why, one of the reasons that they, they've come to their conclusion. The two times I've been to your business, again, clean, not a problem, the parking lot's perfect, both times I ran into loiterers, um, behind your business. One surprised me, because I was, I wanted to see what the back door that you have there, you know, where that led to, and, so anyways, I walked around the building, there was someone loitering there, um, not doing anything other than smoking a cigarette or whatever, but, you know, just got my mind thinking. Um, I was just there yesterday, and, uh, unfortunately, there was another person, a different person loitering, and he was counting his money from, I guess, his, uh, traffic counts or whatever, um, but it got me thinking again, you know, what's, what could happen behind this business? It's an unfortunate location, I think, and I think alcohol will only add to the problems that, that are already in that entire shopping center. I know you're not responsible, and you're actually taking a step in improving it, I just don't know that the alcohol right now, at this point, and we've only been open since September, right? So, I mean, it's early on, we don't know you as a business owner, you have a lot of fans here, so I trust that you are a good business owner, um, but I don't think it's enough time to see if this is the right choice to make that exception that we're looking to make in this case. So I'll be supporting the motion on, on the dais tonight.
Okay, um, I, I, my thing is they're a convenience store, they're not a, they're not a liquor store, and so I know that when people go in there, they expect probably to, to find, you know, the, not only snacks, but maybe, um, a six-pack of beer, because most seven-elevens carry that. So, um, and I know that, you know, the incidental sales don't really, that's hard, because they don't have a high profit margin, they don't, you know, so it's hard to make, make a living on that, and I, I appreciate the upgrade on the building, because it used to be, gosh, they had purple curtains in the windows or something for years, and I, I don't want to see it go out of business, I, I don't want to see that, you know, that happen again. I think it, at least it's, it's the entry to our city, and it's like, you know, they cleaned up the corner a lot over there. I think crime probably is, is up a, a little bit overall in Vista, because of the, um, early release of, of the criminals that, you know, the, from jail, that, because of the, the governors released them, and so I think that probably that is affecting our crime rate, maybe all over Vista. So, um, and, and my concern also is the homeless people there, I, you know, if, if there's, if there's a homeless or a loiterer outside that's, and, and the one was hanging out there, we saw him for several hours, that, that would make me afraid to, to shop there, so I, you know, you have to be sure to call the sheriff. If there's somebody loitering, you need to call the sheriff right away, and make sure that they get out there and, and make sure that they aren't, aren't doing that. So that, that's, that's my concern, it would, you know, but, um, I know you're a business person, and I know you're trying to, you're struggling to make it, and so I, I would like to, you know, help you do that. I, I've been a struggling business person before myself, and so I know how hard it is when you have a small business to, to make that go, so, um, I will be, how's the motion go, is it kind of a backwards? You vote yes, you vote no to... Support the... Okay, yeah, okay. So I will not be supporting staff's recommendation, is that how it goes? Yes, okay.
Could the applicant make one last comment?
So, anyway, so I guess we'll cast our votes. So vote no, right, or by yes? If I know against the motion, okay. Okay. So that motion, it actually, the, the staff recommendation passes, and so that means that he, they're denying the special use permit. So with that, that takes care of that for today, and, um, the next public hearing was... Oh, I need to open the public hearing and continue it, so that's, uh, the next public hearing was the two thousand and twelve Regional Transportation Improvement Program, the R T I P amendment, and, uh, we'll open the public hearing, and then we're going to, uh, continue that to a later date. To March eleventh.
Madam, do we need to hear the staff report, or can we just close the hearing and...
We intended to open it so that we wouldn't have to renotice it for the next meeting, but we're intended to give you the presentation at the next meeting.
Okay. So then I would, I would move that we close the public hearing and continue...
No, we don't want to close it.
We'll leave it open and continue it.
Continuing it.
Okay, I move that we continue this item to the next, uh, meeting.
Okay, do we need to vote on it? Yes, okay, everyone vote, please. Okay, with that, we're going to move on to, um, remarks, so I guess we'll, maybe we'll start, maybe we'll start with John today, do you have any remarks, John? You want to talk about cooking pancakes?
Yes, uh, we had a pancake breakfast on Saturday, it was very successful, we had about eleven hundred served. If you missed it, you missed a great breakfast, uh, eggs, sausage, pancakes. I was actually in the back flipping pancakes, so that was a, a, a great event for the City Vista, the money that we raise goes to the basketball program, and sponsoring children to play basketball for our city program, and also, uh, some of the, sponsoring some of the facilities as well. Um, and today, I had the opportunity to, uh, welcome one of our newest businesses, which was Tri-City Medical Center's Nifty at Fifty, which is a, uh, workout center for those, as they said, mature adults, uh, over fifty, and, um, it's a real nice facility, it's a place that, uh, those individuals, uh, at that age level would feel comfortable working out in, and, uh, my only question was, if someone over fifty is mature, what does that make me, I guess?
Well, I'm not sure that a mature adult is fifty.
Well, they, they corrected me, they said that, uh, there's plenty of people over fifty that are immature as well, so... But, uh, thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Councilwoman Campbell?
I had an opportunity on the week, over the weekend, to attend the pancake breakfast, brought Mayor Wood from Oceanside with me as well, and, uh, very good turnout at that event, and thank you for your service in making the pancakes. Also had an opportunity to attend the, the Safety Day at the Vista Village Center on Saturday as well, and also, uh, the opportunity to, um, open, I guess, with a little recognition for the artists, uh, the art gallery here over the weekend on Saturday as well, which was very well-attended. That's all I have to report.
Thank you.
Councilmember Coles?
Sorry I missed the pancakes, John, I'm trying to lose weight. When you're over, when you're gonna be over seventy, you gotta watch, watch what you eat, yeah. I, uh, you know, the, the Tri-City Nifty over fifty thing was a neat reception, and, and I, uh, compliment, uh, Councilmember Aguilar's mom, who was out demonstrating how to really do it, so you've got, uh, you've got a good, uh, model to follow. I also enjoyed the Friday night event with our employee recognition, uh, dinner and banquet up, uh, at the Golf Club of California. It was nice to, to see all of our employees, uh, get rewarded for some of the nice things that they do, and even those who didn't get the rewards, the final award, were at least recognized for their achievements, and, so, uh, I want to thank city staff for, for encouraging and enhancing, uh, the, uh, relationship among our employees, and that's all.
Thank you. Yes, the Nifty After Fifty event, I was there, but I couldn't stay, because it was, it didn't quite start on time, and I had to be someplace else, so I was disappointed I didn't get to, to stay and see the event, but I will go back and visit it again. And, uh, Safety Day was a, was a good day, it was, uh, well-attended, I understand, I went later in the afternoon, but, um, I did want to say thank you to city staff for Friday night, that was a, a really nice dinner, and congratulations to not just the winners of the awards, but to the entire staff, we, we really have a great staff here in the city, and I just want to say congratulations to all of you, you do a great job, and I appreciate you all very, very much. And also, I want to say thank you to Mayor Ritter and Deputy Mayor John Aguilar for coming to my Red High Heel Walk on Sunday, as well as many of the staff members here that came. Uh, we did our, our quick, uh, Walk a Mile in Her Shoes to raise awareness for women's heart health, and it, uh, is still Heart Health Awareness Month in the City of Vista, I have my little scarf on. Uh, we walked, uh, I don't know if it was really a mile, but it was a quick walk, and we raised two hundred and fifty dollars for the American Heart Association, so I just want to say thank you to the city, to the community that came out, to staff for supporting me, and for the mayor and the deputy mayor as well. And, and Patrick, I know you were there in spirit. So that's all I have, thank you.
Okay. Now, we did have a busy weekend this weekend, I, I went by the pancake breakfast, and there were people, like, out the door, there, and they're out on the patio and everywhere at Bringle Terrace, so it was very successful for you guys. I felt sorry for John back there sweating, cooking pancakes. And then we had the art gallery, the, um, the Civic Center's, um, Vista Vision's two thousand and fourteen exhibit opened on Saturday with an artist reception and announcement of the juror selections, which are noted on the gallery ribbons, if you look out there, the exhibit will run through April third, so, um, take, yeah, go take a look at all the ma- it's amazing art out there, it's just absolutely beautiful. I, I got there a little late, I couldn't get there right when the, um, announcements were, but I got there a little bit late and saw a lot of people still. Um, the People's Choice winner will be announced in April, so if you, you can still vote for the People's Choice Award, um, on that, and Safety Day was great, Nifty After Fifty, I went there today, but I had to leave, because I had to go to San Marcos, um, State of the City over there, so it's been, it was just a busy weekend. I'm holding the first of three mini State of the City meetings tomorrow night at the Boys and Girls Club at six o'clock, so, um, it's a free event, and it's open to the public, and we're just gonna kind of tell everybody what's going on in the city, and myself, and I know the sheriff, Joe Rowdy, and a few other people, I think Devin Rodichka is for the school district, I can't remember who all the speakers are, but it'll be tomorrow night at, um, the Boys and Girls Club at six o'clock again. It's a, uh, opportunity to learn about what's going on in the city, and, um, if you miss one, there's two, uh, this, miss this one, there's two others, uh, March third at Breeze Hill Elementary, and March seventeenth at our Vista Library right over here, so, um, details are available online, cityofvista.com. And, um, I want to thank all the artists who provided the submittals for the next Kites Over Vista installation, this is our sixth round of kites, and they just, I, they keep getting better, they're on, well, people on TV can't see, but they're on the table back there, so they're, they're just actually amazing. We received nineteen submittals and approved eight to be installed in our downtown, and I'm hoping we can keep some of the ones in our downtown that are already there. I mean, you get to have favorites, and then you don't want to see them go away. Um, the eight prototypes are in the back, back there, and they're all, um, pretty cool, so go take a look at them. The full size sculptures are scheduled to be installed in this May. What else? Fifty Barrels, oh, we had a Fifty Barrel, forgot about that, Saturday night, Fifty Barrels, we got an opening, oh my gosh, the downtown was so busy on Saturday night, it was very exciting, wasn't it? Yeah, so Fifty Barrels was busy, uh, Vista Pub was busy, the, the Mother Earth, yeah, Mother Earth was, every, there was people all over downtown. Urban Pizza, I saw them bringing pizzas across the street, it was, um, a busy night and, and exciting in the downtown, I love to see our downtown like that. The Vista Library Concert Series begins March second, that's Sunday, right? Is it March first, Saturday? Oh my gosh, March, it's March already. Um, Friends of the Vista Library hosts a musical concert on the first Sunday of each month at one-thirty, and the next concert is a classical Qatar performance, it's on this Sunday, March second, it's free and open to the public, and information, again, is online at ourcityofvista.com. And I think that is, I think that's all of my stuff, I pass it on to our city manager for his update.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple items, next Tuesday, March fourth, is our goal-setting workshop.
Oh, yeah.
That'll be at two PM in the community room, so if anybody from the public is interested, uh, please attend. We also, on March seventh, which is Friday, the Senior Center is presenting information to the public on all the various types of senior services and programs that they have, and that'll be at the library from eleven-thirty to two, uh, eleven-thirty to twelve-thirty on March seventh. And, uh, the Wave Water Park is hiring for the summer, so if you know of any youth that want to get involved and get a job that has flexible hours and you get to work outdoors, please go to thewavewaterpark.com and, um, look for more information. And you spoke about the Kites Over Vista, and we had nineteen great submittals, and one of those nineteen submittals was our redevelopment director, John Meyer, who's our artist, artist-in-residence, and so just wanted to congratulate John on, on having one of those accepted.
Did he get picked?
He got picked.
Oh.
His, uh, his is the Sun Kites, which is in the back by, uh, on the table, right in the middle. And then, uh, once again, thank you all for attending the annual employee recognition event on Friday night, it means a lot to the...
Friday night. It means a lot to the employees, and we really appreciate it. So, thank you.
Anything from Mr. Stone? How was your first meeting up here?
I enjoyed it. Thank you.
It wasn't your first meeting.
It was enjoyable. Thank you.
Okay. Anything for our city clerk, Mercy? Killian? No? Okay, I guess that, that we're adjourned. Eight forty-four, we're adjourned today.